Good evening. Oh, I forgot my chair was good. Sorry, these are heavy chairs. Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. If you all could take a moment to silence your cellphones. I say this, my phone went off in court this week, I'm so mortified. Anyway, so everyone silence your cellphones so you two are not mortified like me. Make sure it's off. Um. Is that the Jetsons? All right, showing your age, okay. Okay. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first proclamation, we have several proclamations this evening. The first proclamation is in recognition of the service of the Western North Carolina Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. And Julie Mayfield, Councilmember Julie Mayfield is going to read this proclamation, but I'm going to come down as well. Everyone who is here for this proclamation, please come forward up here to the lectern. I mean, it's optional, but I'd like you all to come forward.
Whereas August is a month of remembrance for the risk of catastrophic harm of nuclear weapons, and whereas the Asheville City Council proclaims appreciation for the service of the Western North Carolina Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility in reminding us what can happen from the use of nuclear weapons and to deal realistically with the threat, and whereas the Western North Carolina Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility has been a presence in our community for more than 30 years with a principal mission to constructively deal with the risk we face from the use of nuclear weapons, and whereas today we see an increased risk of the use of nuclear weapons due to threats of their use in conflicts between nations, potential poor judgment of world leaders, misinterpretation of computerized warning systems, and increasing risks of cyber attacks. And whereas there is a temptation to dismiss the risk of these scenarios as something that might occur on a distant continent, yet WNC PSR reminds us these risks endanger all of us and that there is no meaningful medical response to detonation of nuclear weapons. And whereas Western North Carolina Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility adds its voice by calling on Congress to lead an effort to prevent nuclear war by renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first, canceling the trillion-dollar plan to replace its entire arsenal with enhanced weapons, and actively pursuing a verifiable agreement among nuclear-armed nations to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby sign this proclamation in recognition of the service of the Western North Carolina Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility and the efforts made here locally, and encourage all citizens to support WNC PSR and urge legislators to take meaningful action to decrease the risk of nuclear weapons.
If you'll use this microphone if you speak. If you'll come, use this microphone. Yeah. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the recognition of our work to prevent the use of nuclear weapons. I am Terry Clark, the Chairman of the Western North Carolina Chapter of PSR, and these folks are members of the chapter. As Julie said, we have been meeting for over 30 years and we meet once a month. Our principal mission is to prevent the use of nuclear weapons. PSR was established in the 1970s when physicians recognized that there was no reasonable medical response to the effects of nuclear war, that prevention was the only cure. Their work back then actually played a key role in facilitating Premier Gorbachev and President Reagan in getting together and making the progress that they made back then. Now, in addition to the blast effect and the immediate effects of nuclear weapons, reliable studies have shown in the past few years that if a hundred of today's nuclear weapons are used in a regional conflict, that it will thrust so much dust into the air that the rays of the sun will be blocked and over a broad area that will occur and lead to famine and death of billions now it's estimated. Now, we in the United States have what I would call an antiquated, poorly functioning system of managing nuclear weapons. First of all, we maintain the option of first use. In a sense, we keep potential adversaries guessing as to what we will do. The President, Republican or Democrat, is the sole decision-maker, and the official guidelines are that it can be uncontested. So we've had a serious problem that's drifted off for decades, and it's still that way. We have hundreds of nuclear weapons, mostly the ICBMs, intercontinental ballistic missiles in the Midwest are on hair-trigger alert because they would be destroyed promptly in an all-out nuclear war with Russia. Thus, they're going to be fired within 15 minutes, and with what we know today about cyberterrorism and attacks, they are vulnerable to cyberterrorism for their use.
Can I say one last sentence here?
We need to remind, so we deal with this by denial, sweeping it under the rug psychologically. To us, a key thing is recognizing that the work we do today is for our grandchildren and future generations. And I think if you keep that in mind, that's the way you can deal with these overwhelming sort of issues. Thank you.
for All Act 2019, and Councilwoman Shanika Smith is going to present this proclamation. And anyone who is here on this proclamation, please come forward.
I had to acknowledge Tom, he and I have been corresponding for maybe 90 days concerning today, so thank you for being here. Whereas every person in Asheville deserves high-quality health care, and whereas the never-ending rise in cost of health care act challenges to our municipal budget and our small businesses, which keep our community thriving, and whereas the Medicare for All Act of 2019 would provide national health care for every person in the United States for all necessary medical care, including prescription drugs, hospital surgical and outpatient services, primary and preventative care, emergency services, women reproductive care, dental and vision care, and long-term care. And whereas the Medicare for All Act of 2019 would provide coverage without copays, deductibles, or out-of-pocket costs, and would slash bureaucracy, protect the patient-doctor relationship, and assure patients a free choice of doctors. And whereas recent polls show that a majority of Americans support Medicare for All, and whereas Medicare for All Act of 2019 would guarantee that all residents of Asheville would be fully covered for health care without copays, deductibles of other or other out-of-pocket costs, and would save millions in taxpayer dollars now spent on premiums that provide often inadequate health insurance coverage for employees. And whereas the quality of life for residents of Asheville would vastly improve because they would be able to get ongoing care they need instead of waiting until they have a medical emergency that could unpin their lives as well as further burden local resources. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of Asheville, North Carolina, do hereby sign the proclamation in support of Medicare for All Act of 2019 in the City of Asheville and encourage community members to support Medicare for All 2019, and call on our federal legislators to work towards an immediate enactment assuring appropriate and effective health care for all residents of the United States.
Thank you so much. I'm Dr. Ellen Kiasmerak, and as a charter member of Healthcare for All WNC, I proudly and gratefully accept the Mero proclamation in support of the Medicare for All Act 2019. Many thanks to Ms. Smith for being our council champion in this effort. She did scoop most of my remarks, so I'm going to recap them quickly. As a physician and geriatrician, I saw how important that golden ticket known as the Medicare card was for my patients. My prescription for the future of health care in America is, everyone has a universal health card when they are born that expires when they die. The single-payer plan creates one national entity that pays for health care in the U.S., eliminating the chaos of the private insurers and complexity of the bureaucracy that consumes almost 20% of our health care dollar. The right to choose your own health care providers is preserved. Copays, deductibles, premiums, and all other out-of-pocket expenses are abolished with a modest increase in personal taxes that are predictable every year. Drug prices, testing, hospital stays, and medical equipment prices are all negotiated and standardized. Employers are no longer providers of health care insurance so that they can manage their budgets without factoring in runaway health care costs. This includes cities and municipalities. Since all individuals have their own health coverage, people are free to change jobs, move to different locales, and be entrepreneurs without concern about their health care coverage. Physicians have their documentation and billing issues streamlined and minimized, getting back to the business of taking care of patients. Some of you may feel that Medicare for All is too controversial. For some, the biggest controversy is why the U.S. remains the only advanced country without affordable access to health care for all of its people. Your proclamation underscores the message that health care is a right, not a privilege. To quote a famous man, "Of all the forms of inequality, injustice in health is the most shocking and the most inhuman because it often results in physical death." Thank you.
The next proclamation on our agenda is the Kiwanis Club of Asheville Day, and my agenda says that Karen Corp is here. So there you are. And please, Karen, bring anyone else forward on this proclamation.
Good, how are you?
Okay, let's do this. Whereas the Kiwanis Club of Asheville was chartered August 11, 1919, and celebrates 100 years of service to our community this year, and is recognized as the first Kiwanis Club to be organized in the Carolinas District of North and South Carolina. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Asheville members have dedicated themselves to making our community a better place through their support of local charitable projects and contributed significant financial support to local schools and organizations. Whereas they have demonstrated exemplary service throughout Buncombe County by supporting area programs including the Terrific Kids Program, Bike Giveaway, Adopt a School Program, Key Clubs, and Youth Scholarships, the Kiwanis Biltmore 5K-15K Classic, the Kiwanis Christmas Shopping Spree, the Kiwanis Youth Book Giveaway, Sleep Tight Kids, and the Kiwanis Caffeine which began in 1946. I don't know what that is. Whereas the Kiwanis Club of Asheville has provided leadership and assistance to many local organizations, including Asheville-Buncombe Community Christian Ministries, the Salvation Army, and the Boys and Girls Club, Evelyn Charities, Alita Homes, Alita Home, and Kiwanis Family Care Center at the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit at Mission Hospital. And whereas the members of Kiwanis Club of Asheville have dedicated their time and energy these past 100 years in community and civic service, volunteered on various boards and commissions, served as elected officials of Asheville and Buncombe County with nonprofit agencies, youth groups, and in schools for the betterment of our citizenry, now therefore I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim August 11, which has already happened, 2019 as Kiwanis Club of Asheville Day in the City of Asheville, and recognize the Kiwanis Club members who devote themselves daily to living the golden rule, the tenets of high idealism, engaged citizenship altruistic service, and the adoption of higher social, business, and professional standards.
Good afternoon, my name is Wendell Comancy. As you know, Kiwanis of Asheville has been around for 100 years, serving the community. As a whole, Kiwanis is a global community of clubs dedicated to improving the lives of children. Our core mission is to build stronger communities, one child at a time. Kiwanis is a Native American expression, which means "we build." For a century, our club has been involved in various community service projects, continuously engaging in school youth leadership programs, and financially supporting other nonprofit organizations with similar missions, working for the betterment of our children. As the current Charter President, on behalf of all the members of Kiwanis of Asheville, thank you for this recognition today as our 100th year anniversary. We are delighted to invite all of you to our gala celebration on September 21st. Thank you again.
Week, and I see Jeff Kaplan &amp; Company are here. Please come up.
Whereas the City of Asheville's culture and passion for creativity is well-represented in the entrepreneurship community, and whereas the entrepreneurship community is a model of our values for equality and diversity, and whereas the entrepreneurship community creates wealth and jobs for thousands of Asheville residents, and whereas new venture creation is integral to the growth and sustainability to the future of the City of Asheville, and whereas the Appalachian spirit and the entrepreneurial mindset are a powerful combination that creates uniquely Asheville businesses. Now therefore, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim September 2 through the 8, 2019, as Asheville Entrepreneurship Week in the City of Asheville, and urges the citizens of Asheville to support and celebrate our local entrepreneurs. Congratulations.
Mayor Manheimer and council members, thank you for this ceremonial proclamation. It's an honor to represent Venture Asheville, a program of the best Chamber of Commerce in the nation, that is a fact, not an opinion, and the Economic Development Coalition for Asheville-Buncombe County, in a city that recognizes and celebrates the contributions of entrepreneurs at all levels and at all phases of their journey where we live and work. This is our third annual Entrepreneurship Week, it reflects the maturity and growing sophistication of our ecosystem. We continue to grow partners, resources, and events. This year has the addition of several new events, namely the Asheville Startup Games, a competition among startups raising money for charities while competing in games of luck, skill, and athleticism. Also new is the Big Scary Fish Tank, not only a fundraiser for On Track, but also a live pitch for equity event with up to $500,000 up for grabs. Entrepreneurship isn't only startups here in Asheville, we include our creative economy with events like Mojo Connects and Mindful Mornings, and we'll close out the week with TEDx Asheville to bring up more ideas worth sharing. And to further our goals of building a diverse and inclusive entrepreneurial ecosystem, I'd like to ask Lynn Smith, Chairwoman of the Mountain Community Capital Fund, to make an announcement.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Lynn Michelle Smith, I'm a native of Asheville, and I stand before you as the Chair of the Mountain Community Capital Fund. This fund is sponsored by City-County Government, Self-Help Credit Union, Mountain Bizworks, and Carolina Small Business Fund. This fund will provide accessible funding for small business owners within the City of Asheville and Buncombe County who may otherwise not qualify for financing. In the spirit and celebration of Entrepreneurs Week, I am pleased to announce that the Mountain Community Capital Fund will officially launch today. For more information, you can check out the City of Asheville's website. Thank you for your commitment to local entrepreneurs and to what this means for business owners who understand that entrepreneurship is a solution to extreme poverty.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Lastly, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Hatch ABL Foundation. Hatch ABL Foundation is Asheville's high-growth incubator. Mentors and founders building high-growth startups in the trenches every day. How? With world-class programs, a high-energy place, and collaborative partnerships. Partnership is particularly key today as Hatch partners with Venture Asheville and the City of Asheville to kick off our third Asheville Entrepreneurship Week. Thank you so much.
I've got my ticket to Big Scary Fish. Not Shark Tank. Okay, council, next we have the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that anyone has a question about, clarification, would like to have considered separately? Or do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
And actually, can I just, I didn't make any of those things. Yeah, I just wanted to flag for all the transit advocates in the city, and there are many, that there are three items on here related to our transit system and advancing that. Perhaps first and foremost is amending the agreement that we have with the management company that will provide the funding and pave the way for the improvements to the system that we funded in this year's budget and that will start in January of 2020. Also, here is an agreement with Duke Energy where they are giving us $200,000 for our EV infrastructure associated with our electric buses. And then the third is that we are in fact ordering seven new buses. They are not going to be electric buses, they are going to be hybrids, basically because until they make a 30-foot electric bus, they have only limited utility in Asheville. So these are three great steps forward, and I just want to commend our city manager and all the work that she has done and our transportation staff on getting this. There was nothing easy, I think, about any of these things. And then the only other thing I want to say is there's a resolution on here related to renaming the Tennis Court Number One at Aston Park in honor of Louis Isaac. And I know I am by far not the only person in the room, but I just had the good fortune to know Louis, I had the great fortune to play tennis with Louis, and count those as some of the most pleasurable matches of my tennis life, and just want to honor him. And I think it's great that the city is honoring him in this way.
Okay, anyone wishing to, yes.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott, and I just want to speak quickly to item G, which is the budget amendment for $33,500 to the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And just, you know how important that office is, you know, it's their job to make sure that the policies and practices that are engaged by the city, you know, don't exacerbate structural racism. And I would hope that maybe some of the money that's going to be funding the Office of Equity and Inclusion will be able to be used for a real good data analysis of the voter registration that should be dropping next week, and so we can see exactly how the, you know, new district systems will affect African-American voters here. Because that's, you know, the biggest policy that we have is our charter, and changing the charter is the biggest practice that we could have. And just want to make sure that, you know, our Department of Equity and Inclusion is well-funded for that, and I'm really glad that that's on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Next, we have the Manager's Report, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager, Debra.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got actually a couple of things that I want to share with the community, and I won't be doing them individually or personally, but we will have staff make presentations on the following. Development Services Process Enhancements, and that will be done by Ben Woody with our Development Services Department, and then we'll have Kathy Ball, who's with the City Manager's Office, talk about downtown public safety and our street outreach. But before they come up, I would also like to introduce two new members of our City of Asheville team. I think you've read about them in the newspaper, but I wanted to officially introduce them today. And unfortunately, one of them is not here, was unavailable, he's out of town, so won't be here, but I would like to introduce Richard White, who is a native Ashevilleian. to introduce Richard White, who is a native Ashevilleian. I think I said that right. And has come back home, and he's serving in the role as an Assistant City Manager. So if you don't mind if you could just stand, Richard, that would be fantastic. And our new Chief of Police, Chris Bailey, is, as I said, unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. And he is from Indianapolis, Indiana. So we welcome our two new team members. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Ben Woody.
Come on, you're done.
I've got three minutes. That is not fair.
Okay, Maggie, I have three minutes.
Thanks, Maggie.
Hurry, Ben.
We know who's really the manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ben Woody. I'm the Director of the Development Services Department. And I'm going to take a few moments this evening to go over three initiatives that Development Services is currently working on. These are related to more of our kind of daily workload, which is processing and moving people and permits through Development Services. So I'm going to focus on those initiatives. I'm going to talk about digital residential permitting. As this council knows, about a year and a half ago, we took the Level 1, 2, and 3 site plans, and those are now a digital process. And this is kind of the next step in that iteration of kind of evolving the department. We've converted our residential permitting process to a digital process. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. I want to talk about the Development Notification Tool. We just, the city just soft-launched that like a week or two ago. So it is brand-new, probably not widely known yet, so you're going to be one of the first groups to hear about this tool. But it's operational, it's functional. I'm excited to share that with the council. Then I'm going to take a real brief moment to talk about the concept of having expedited review processes for projects that align with council strategic priorities. So, real quickly, I like to start, we do process mapping a lot in DSD, and I like to start with this slide, because we sat down about a year and a half ago, and we mapped out what it took to get a residential building permit, and that spread across the whole wall in the back of DSD's meeting room. That was a long piece of paper. It doesn't look like it, but it took three photographs to capture it. And so, that's where our process started for residential permits. So I know that moving something from a paper to a digital file seems like a simple thing to do, but it's actually pretty complex, because you've got to change processes that relate to how you move things, or systems that relate to that. So the little sticky notes are steps in the process, and potential barriers, and the little stars are ideas or potential solutions. So we kind of started there. At that time, it took us about 10 to 12 business days to process a residential permit when it was a paper process. So when we started this initiative to improve the process, we had kind of three folks, or three groups that were involved. It's our customers, first and foremost, the permit center staff, and then the review staff. So we had change. It impacted three different groups. We had to manage that. And what that looked like was revising what the customer had to do, their requirements, updating our internal workflows. We weren't moving paper anymore, we're moving digital files, and then integrating technology to make that work better. And our goal was to get the process down to a six-business-day turnaround. Where at that, we do about five to seven business days. We've basically cut the time in half. There's still work to be done, but that was a good outcome of that. One thing I want to say, even before, I should have said this on the last slide, but, and the purpose, the reason for the change wasn't because we woke up and decided to do digital permitting one day. It's because we survey our DSD customers, and the number-one initiative that we hear from those customers is they want digital access to the city. So that was the number-one thing that our customers asked for, was a digital process. So I want to give some, that's where this initiative really started, with the people that use DSD services. So, big-picture changes, you know, one thing we had to do was no longer accept incomplete applications. That sounds kind of innocuous, but it's a big deal, actually. I think we used to think that taking incomplete applications was good customer service. It's really not. What makes a process work better is to get all the correct information upfront, and it lets us do our job faster and with more efficiency. And I'll talk about what we did to try to alleviate that issue. This is an important part of this. We embrace and accept digital applications. We don't require it. I don't think we ever can. Not everybody is going to have the ability or the knowledge to complete a digital process. So when we put our equity lens into this, we know we've still got to be able to take paper. We've got to sit down with people and help them through the process. So we'll always have people come into the lobby. It's just when you leave us your paper, we're going to convert it to a digital format and then process it that way. So there's still, you know, acceptance of paper.
Which is good, because our digital just went out.
Yeah. So if you want to hold up a handwritten piece of paper, okay.
Actually printed out paper for this, so.
Stand downstairs.
I can keep, well, no, it's just talking points. So another thing is, we wanted to improve our customer resources. So I said, we don't want to take incomplete applications, but I felt to ask the customers to do that, we had an obligation to help them meet our expectations. So I think if you ask people in the past, and there's probably some people that would still say this, what is it that DSD wants, they're not really sure. So we've tried to bring clarity to that by updating our applications, creating checklists, creating a better website to serve as a guide to people. We have a new lobby renovation that's a little more geared towards how we're trying to do business. We have customer kiosks. So we have, we've built tools and education resources to help people meet our expectations so we can provide a better service. Internally, some of the things we had to do, because change is hard for everyone, is we had to look at our workflows. And so we wanted to make sure that any technology that we integrated, any changes that we integrated were scalable to other permit types, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel in the future. So hopefully in about a year, I can come back and talk to you about commercial building permits being digital. That would be the next step. We have partner organizations, too. I think a lot of people assume that DSD does all the permitting. We don't. We do part of the permitting. Almost every permit that comes to their office requires review by some other agency or city departments. We had to bring our partners to bear in this as well. And finally, we had to make sure we trained our staff and worked with ITS to develop technology solutions that helped us be successful at creating this digital process. So to wrap this up, conclusions, I think our data has told us that the digital process has improved our accuracy. It's obviously improved turnaround times that we have. I think the process, we've been mindful to create processes that are, can be replicated for other permit types that will have to continually reinvent the wheel. I think the digital process is extremely desirable to our development community and contracting community. But we also recognize that that's not, not everybody does this every day. So we've got to have tools and access that looks different for different people. And there will always be a learning curve. If you pull one permit for a deck in your life, you're just not going to know how to do all this stuff. So we recognize that we've still got to have capacity to help people that need that help when it's applicable. And finally, we're always trying to build additional staff depth. So when we have people that leave or go other places, we can kind of fill in those roles and kind of keep the system moving. So moving on to the second part, the Development Notification Tool. I think I've spoke with some of the council committees at times about this tool, but the concept is basically, it actually started really from what we heard from really neighborhood residents in the community. A lot of times, we work closely with the development applicants because we process their permits and their applications. But we hear a lot from the residents that getting access to that information can be difficult, and when you do access development information, they don't always understand it or don't know how to approach that information. So we know there's a need for better access for the residents in the city to these processes. And we've kind of came up, and I'm not even sure where it came from exactly, but the idea that, is there a way to provide notification to people using technology that gets them development information in a timely, timely manner? But then, the key part of this tool, I think, is not just making somebody aware that there's development near where they live or in their area, but how do we educate those residents where they can better participate in the development process? And even better yet, can we get to an outcome where, when residents have more understanding of the development process and how to best participate, can we ultimately get better development, better communication, and less frustration among the residents and the developers? It's not going to be perfect, but can we get to a better place with this tool? We think we can, and we started with a survey. And I used to think this was a lot of survey responses. We got almost 300 on this, but then on the noise ordinance, we got 1,500 responses. So I don't know if this was a lot of survey responses.
Survey envy.
It did. At the time, it felt like a lot, but we got actually close to 300 responses. And it was really interesting to read the comments, because you'd be surprised that a lot of our residents don't know who's building this. There's a lot of thought that the city builds these projects. A lot of residents don't understand where the regulations come from. We had a lot of comments where they think that the rules are made up on the fly, and they're not, as you know. They're very structured rules. And probably the biggest thing we heard from the community is, they don't know who to talk to, when to talk to them, or how to talk to them. So it's just a lack of awareness and information around these development processes. So we took that information, and we had another question and just kind of asked, what is it you're looking for in a tool? What's important to you? And overwhelmingly, people want notification. They want to know when things are happening in their communities. So we worked with our ITS department, who does amazing work. They actually help Development Services with a lot of the projects we're doing. And we thought of this concept of creating a tool, and I'll show you some screenshots in a second. It's an opt-in tool, so you can only get notice if you opt into the tool. So we can't find people and send them notice, but I think that means the key is, starting tonight, hopefully, we've got to really push this out and bring an awareness of this tool, and get our residents, or anybody for that matter, to sign up to be involved in their community. So you can opt into the tool. You can choose your notification types. You can choose it by geography. We're working on creating like development types. So if you're interested in affordable housing, or multifamily, or small business, the tool has the ability to expand, where you can target certain development types. The notice is delivered via email, but you can also go to Simplicity and look at the information without getting an email, but you've got to do that proactively. But it's an email notice, and then what that email notice does, it takes you to a project page for the development. And on that project page, you have access to everything that the staff sees. You have access to all the digital information. And what's good about the tool is, when we receive an application in DSD, we enter it into our permit system, then the tool is automated, so it creates this page automatically. So it's not a heavy lift by the staff, and it does that within probably two or three days, business days of us receiving the application. So the residents are going to have access to information as soon as the staff does, really. But again, the key piece of this, or the tool does need some additional work, is the process education. We got to make sure that people understand, when they get this information, how to interact and engage around the information.
How long do you think before we push out that?
It's out now. It's actually, you can sign up for notifications right now.
Oh, but you were saying it needs a little.
It needs to be pushed, like, we need to, in earnest, like, share the links with, it was, so the IT model of technology is to release things kind of slowly. Now they call it the waterfall model, and just build on it as you learn about it. So it's out there now. We've had user testing that's been done.
I've single-handedly told everyone about the Asheville app.
Yeah. Then you're going to be a good resource for this tool.
I was thinking we need to have this.
So the first thing we had to do was sit down with IT and make them understand the development process. And again, I like taking these pictures of kind of process mapping, but this is the first day we met with IT, and this was DSD's attempt to explain our process to IT. And I can't imagine, I can't imagine how they left that first meeting and probably felt overwhelmed by trying to build a tool. But they have actually built a tool that takes this, and I think really simplifies it in a way that people can understand. So what you see, this is a screenshot. I wish I could walk you through the tool, because there is a lot of information on it. But this is a screenshot, and this is what it looks like if you come to the tool through Simplicity. So if you go to Simplicity, click on Development, this is what you'll see. And at the top of this, at the top of the screenshot, there's a link that allows you to sign up to receive the email notices. Again, you see, the first thing you see is types of development. So it'll walk through and take each, all the acronyms. We use Level 1 and 2. It'll take you through and tell you what that is. You know, instead of saying like, a building that's 20,000 square feet, we tried to say a Level 1 is going to be like a restaurant, a pharmacy, a small grocery store. So we tried to use like terminology that I think folks can relate to and understand. If we could scroll down, there's a navigation bar on the left, but we're not live. But if we could scroll down, we have information about the process. So how, what, if you're interested in a Level 1 that's down the street from you, you can look and see what that process looks like. We're real clear about when you can and can't participate. There's not opportunities for public participation in Level 1, so we say that. So we want people to understand how and when they can participate. You can search for development. So if you just want to look around the city and see what's happening, you can do that. There's a section of the website that tells you how to get involved, how you can participate. That needs more work, I think. And then there's FAQs, which we'll keep building FAQs as we hear feedback from the community. If you sign up for the email notices, you'll get an email when a development application comes within whatever geography you choose. You'll get an email that comes to your inbox. And then when you click the link on the email, it'll take you to a project page. Each development has its own project page, so we can copy the link from the project page and share that. It's easy, once the project page is created, it's very easy to share with other people in the community. And what you see at the top of that page is, first of all, a description of the project. And we tried really hard, again, to use vocabulary, I think, that people can understand and avoid the acronyms that we so often use. There's a bar across the top. That's a timeline or a schedule, and that bar will tell a person where the development project is in the process, and you can see what the next steps are in the process. So you can kind of see the total breadth of how long the project will go, where it starts and where it ends. Again, if you, it's hard to see this on the static screen, but there is a, there's a link to an address. If you click on the address, it takes you back to the Simplicity page. It tells you information about that property, so just basic property information. There is a link to the type of review. So again, this is a Level 2, and you can learn about what Level 2 is and how to engage. There's a link to the Excela record. So Excela's our permitting software. It's somewhat difficult to use. I'll be honest about Excela, but there's a lot of information that is in Excela related to a property and its development. So through these project pages, you can get directly to the Excela record for that project. And then finally, there's contact information. So you can see, you can, if you just want to email somebody, there's an avenue to do that as well. So conclusions on that tool is, it's a work, it's a beta tool, which just came out. It's a work in progress. We obviously need more usability testing and more feedback. We want the tool to work for the community, so it is not set in stone. We recognize this. It's soft-launched. We're working with CAPE right now to develop more outreach. So we're trying, we want to find ways to get this out into the community. This is really kind of, we've done a press release on this, but this is really the first, I think, time we've shared this with the community. And so from here, I think we'll launch this tool. I want to build, I want to see us build the education. I think there's a lot of room for improvement in terms of building the education part of this tool, like helping people be engaged in a way that's purposeful and meaningful for the community and for the council. And then we want to continue to build on the notification types. I've had people that literally say they want to know when something happens two doors down from their property. So I got beeped. So we want to do that.
I was going to try to warn you, but I couldn't find a break to.
But I think we can customize how you get notice and what you get notice about. And then the tool's replicable. We can use this tool for street closures, for noise complaints, whatever it is. I mean, the tool can be replicated for other city services that may require notice. But then finally, you can see our opt-in web address. Hopefully everybody had a chance to write that down as I talk through this slide, and you'll see more from CAPE and DSD on this tool and how to get registered for it.
And did you guys build this in-house?
Built it in, ITS built this in-house, so a lot of kudos to them. Chris Collins in Development Service put a lot of energy into this, too. So I would say Scott Barnwell and Chris Collins are the two folks that principally put this together. It's amazing. And they did it in a very short time period. Yeah.
I just signed up for it. Doesn't take long.
Good.
Thank you.
My last slide, I'm, and I'll do this briefly. One of the things that I just want to put on the council's radar, this is not done, this is just kind of a thought, but one thing we want to do in DSD is we want to create expedited review processes that align with your council goals. So we're optimistic that if they're qualifying affordable housing projects, or maybe it's certain types of small business development, anything that aligns with the council goal, one of the things we'd like to work on is creating a expedite process or a way to provide those types of projects a higher level of service and a faster turnaround time, just to make sure that we're not, that DSD is not an obstacle or a barrier to things that are important to the community or to the council. So we are working on that. We've piloted some of these concepts around Le Walker Heights and around some of the bond fund and capital projects. We've got work to do on that. But hopefully I can come back to you later this year and maybe share a process and have some metrics that show you that we can do it better and faster and quicker. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions the council has.
I just want to say thanks for being so responsive on that, the notification tool. This has come up in several places, conditional use permitting and other major developments, or even some minor ones, where people are very frustrated that they don't get notice of this development, that they think is in their neighborhood, but they happen to be outside of the, what is it?
Mandatory notification.
Mandatory notification period. And so this is, this is the thing that will allow everybody to get notified regardless of where you live in the city. And it's everybody to get notified regardless of where you live in the city. And it's, I just, I really commend you guys on creating something that's so responsive and so easy. So everybody sign up for it, because we don't want to ever hear that you didn't know, because now you can know.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ben, thanks before you go. Also, thanks again. This is a lot of what I heard from folks who live kind of in and around me, around my neighborhood, is concerns about notifications. Fantastic. And honestly, I mean, this is something that other communities could probably look to, the county, you know, with development going on in this region. This is incredible. The fact that you guys did this in-house.
In-house, and I'm not aware of another community that has a tool this robust, so...
No, and I've played around with it. It's really, really, really good. It addresses the needs that, you know, we've certainly heard, so...
A lot of credit to ITS.
Man, licensing. Can you guys make any money off this?
Yeah, we should. Seriously. New revenue stream.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I'm Kathy Ball, and I serve in the City Manager's Office as the Assistant City Manager. Many of you all know that we had a lot of concern in our community in the past couple of months around safety and issues associated with safety in downtown. On August the 15th, there was a special call meeting from some of those citizens who were concerned, and they brought up a number of different issues. And we were at the meeting, we were taking a lot of notes, we were listening to what they had to say. We hope that we bring before you some of the things that we're working on, not that this is a complete list of everything that needs to be done. I'm not going to read through all these, because we're going to detail them in a little bit later, but what I would say is, there is this theme, if you're looking through all of these lists of things that the city is working on in partnership with the county, as well as other nonprofits, I would say they're very complex in nature. I would say they require cross-functional, cross-agency teams to deal with. And I would also say that we still need to do more. So one of the things, now I'll start kind of walking through some of the things that are in the process of happening. The council has taken action. City Council did approve funding for a new central police district. It is anticipated that that district will be fully functional and staffed in January of 2020. Of course, the district will help improve response times, community policing, as well as relationship building in downtown. So I'm going to say this, because a lot of our concerns and what we're working toward is a goal of ending homelessness by making it rare and brief and non-occurring, non-reoccurring. And I would say that's important for several members of our community, and the goal that we always keep in mind when we start implementing programs or reaching out to nonprofits. Council approved in this past year's budget, a street outreach program. We are close to signing a contract with Homeward Bound to provide these outreach services. And what this would look like is, if the police or another, the fire department, someone encounters a homeless, what appears to be a homeless person, they will, as long as they have not committed a crime, they will reach out to this provider, Homeward Bound, and ask them to come and help provide assistance in getting the resources that they need, whether it's getting them food, getting them a place to stay, getting them connected with any kind of resource they may need in the community. But Homeward Bound will be hiring a full-time person to be able to address working with the community in this way. We've met with Fire Department, Police Department, and Homeward Bound to make sure we've mapped out a roadmap of how that will happen, so that everybody will be working together to benefit the folks who are most vulnerable in this situation. I will also tell you that the county is contracted with Homeward Bound in the amount, and we don't know a lot of the specifics of it, but we learned recently, for $30,000 to have a similar person from Homeward Bound working at the library to provide these kinds of services.
Kathy, on this, just a quick question on this. In terms of the folks who we're looking to kind of address, is this, is this kind of looking at folks who are chronically homeless, is this looking at folks who would be considered like transient?
Yeah, you picked up on that. It is the chronic homeless. It is providing them with resources. Homeward Bound's mission is a housing-first model, and it is addressing and trying to get folks who are chronically homeless. It is not specifically addressing the transient homeless population, except to say that as these, as folks come into AHOPE, we're going to be providing them, they're going to be providing them with resources, cards, where to be, what they need to do to get services in the community, how they need to avoid getting into trouble when they're in town. So we are using them in a different way to help connect people to resources they need. But this specific one is to connect people to chronically homeless, to get them housed. Thank you for pointing that out. The other thing that has been pretty exciting, and this kind of started when the city was having conversations about Haywood Road issues, the city and county staff have developed a Harm Reduction Task Force, and we have been working hand in hand with Buncombe County on working on tools to help deal with the health and well-being of individuals. Some of those are harm reduction strategies around keeping folks who are addicted to opioids from dying, but others of those are around what to do with the impact of folks who, of the, of the process of doing this, such as needle litter. And we are working, the county got a grant to be able to purchase syringe exchange containers, and we are working with various parts of the community to locate them in strategic places, so that we can reduce the amount of syringe litter that exists. And that's one example of things that we are working on with the county on this task force. They are holding a meeting in October, I don't know the exact date, but it's an open community meeting, and we will be at that meeting to try to learn and try to partner with them. I would also say that we have, you know, we have a fire department downtown that's open 24/7. All of our EMTs carry medication to reduce overdoses, and have resource cards that we talked about available to hand to folks, to tell them where to get some of their needs met. We also have dedicated a full-time person, who essentially their job is to wake up every morning and think about how we can improve downtown for everyone. I'm sure Dana is in the room, I was in the front, but I'm sure she's sitting in the room. And her contact information is here, and she is, she is also a local of Asheville, and is very dedicated to this community as well. We are downtown cleaning services. The city's Public Works Department oversees the cleaning of sidewalks, picking up trash, dealing with graffiti, collecting litter, and watering the hanging baskets. We have a contract to do the street cleaning, and I don't know, this picture kind of shows them, but they, we have increased the amount of times that they clean each of the sidewalks downtown, so that has recently been increased. And we also, I talked to Greg before this meeting, we actually do street sweeping, cleaning, five nights a week in downtown. This is four, but it's actually five. So there were a lot of comments and concerns because of some of the issues that have happened, the criminal issues that have happened around 68 Haywood Street. So we wanted to speak directly to it. Later tonight, you'll hear more information about it, but the hours of operation are seven to 10. We do want to point out that, starting in January, that area is going to be used as a lay-down yard for sidewalk replacement for Haywood Street. The work that's being done is part of a bond project on Haywood Road, Haywood Street. And you'll hear more about that tonight. So these are some examples of the cards and information we have that we make available to folks, and especially through AHOPE, making those available. They see most all folks through their doors in the morning for showers, or for getting a meal, and have a lot of folks who come through and are more than happy to work. They also, AHOPE, as part of our contract, are willing to do training for downtown businesses, to try to tell them who to call and what to do in order to provide more resources to the businesses downtown.
Kathy, where can people get those, those look like cards?
We have them available out in the City Manager's Office, we have them available. We have them available in the Fire Department office downtown. We have some on fifth floor. They are at AHOPE, and we can start taking those with us when we go to business meetings. We have a CBO meeting September 6. We can take those there, so we can start doing more distribution of those. I think the Asheville, the Downtown Association has them as well. So next steps, we will continue to provide you reports and updates on how these programs are growing. Some of the ones that we talked to you about are still in the process, we're being, somebody talked about data earlier, how important it is to measure the outcomes of the programs that we do to make sure they're effective. We continue to work with all the organizations who are vital to the health and well-being of downtown, and we seek opportunities to coordinate them. And we look for guidance from anyone who's willing to be a part of that. As a part of the August 15th meeting, we, I think the group wanted to establish a task force. We would welcome being a part of that and trying to be on board with listening to opportunities for, to solve problems. This is a community call to action. I mean, one of the, one of the things that a lot of communities are facing at this point are issues associated with homelessness. The homelessness, the drug overdose, they're hard things to talk about, but we want to come together to solve them. We cannot do it alone. And so we, we want to do our part, we want to provide the programs that we can provide, but we need other organizations to come and join in with us. So this is kind of a call to action. We have appreciated the work that we've done with, with our nonprofits and with Buncombe County, but we always welcome more people at the table. Here is our contact information. Reach out to us at any of these resources. All of these folks are dedicated to dealing with the issues and concerns with downtown. As I mentioned, we will be going to CBO, the Council of Independent Business Owners. We would be happy to go and make this presentation to anyone who wants to learn more about what we're working on. And that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone have any questions?
So Kathy, in terms, what I hear from a lot of downtown business owners and folks over here is, kind of concerns about dealing with transient folks. And it's less the chronic homeless that they're running into problems with, it's more kind of folks who are kind of in town for a little while, and then go on. What, is there anything in particular that we, that the city, through any of this, is addressing with respect to that particular issue? And what, you know, what information can we provide folks who are, who are kind of concerned about, or running into problems with?
So we can, you know, we have encouraged folks to let us know when there are folks who are transient population, to let us know if there's any violence involved with it, or there's any, what perceived to be any criminal activity. We think, and what we've said, is relationship building downtown with, with our police officers in a way where we're clearly trying to help folks is really important to that. So as part of coming on with the 2020, we had several solutions, several recommendations from groups about things like requiring dog tags for folks. Those are only required for residents in the city at this point. So we're still trying to work on that. I think I'm trying to give you some things that we're trying to do. And Homeward Bound will, will help reach out and try to make sure folks know what their options are, whether they're hanging out in places that are deterring people from being able to conduct their business. They will try to provide them those services. It's just that it's not the model of moving people into home, into home.
Sure. And usually, in the context where I've heard the complaints about it, it's more in terms of folks kind of harassing people on the street, you know, and more than just kind of like regular type of panhandling. It's more aggressive, or, or things along the lines of making people actually concerned about, concerned about their safety.
Yeah, I think, I think ideally, the Police Department want to work with folks, to encourage them to find other places that are less disruptive, but that is something that we will continue to work on.
I was just going to say, this concludes my...
We're doing the manager's report right now. Hang on. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, this concludes the manager's report. And thank you all for your patience. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, the next portion of our agenda is the public hearings agenda. The first item is Item A, and in this item, the applicant has requested a continuance. Do we have a date certain, Maggie? I don't have one here.
We do, October 22nd.
October, okay. Do I have a motion to continue Item A to October 22nd?
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue Item A to October 22nd? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item B, under the public hearings agenda, is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance related to the definition of kitchen and homestay standards. And Shannon Tuck is here to talk to us about this. I think someone wrote your name with it, Kay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. In January 2018, the Asheville City Council adopted ordinance number 4637. This ordinance fell in the middle of an ongoing community discussion about lodging, different types of lodging, and how best to regulate those different forms of lodging. Prior to 2018, several lodging types were lumped together under a general category of lodging facilities. So among other things, this ordinance sought to establish several new definitions distinguishing between these different forms of lodging. And this in turn allowed for the more individualized regulation of those different forms of lodging. One of the new definitions adopted was a definition for kitchen, which had become an increasingly important and necessary term to define, because it was one of the key features used to distinguish between those different forms of lodging. So the individual definitions of different kinds of lodging types would often describe that it included a kitchen or didn't include a kitchen, and so it became necessary to define what exactly was meant by kitchen. The definition of kitchen that was adopted in 2018 basically said that a kitchen was an area within a structure that was used for the preparation and cooking of food, and which included any one of the three following. And so I want to be clear, not all of the three, but any one of the three, which included a stove, a sink, and a full-size refrigerator. So the definition that's up on the screen right now is what I refer to as a red line definition. It is, it is our existing definition showing the proposed edits that are part of this ordinance. So you can see, as it begins, kitchen means an area within a structure that is used or designed to be used for the preparation or cooking of food, and that contains, and then you skip down to the inserted new language at the bottom, contains one or more cooking appliances requiring a 220 volt, that says 220, it should be 240 volt outlet or gas connection. So this proposed amendment is to, proposes to strike out those three things. So it's no longer necessary, in order to classify a kitchen, that you have any one of those three. And now we're saying, the only thing that really defines a kitchen is the presence of that stove, that cooking appliance, that requires that 240 volt outlet or that gas connection. So if you have those other amenities, you have the sink, you have the refrigerator, you have all of the cabinetry and everything else, that by itself doesn't constitute a kitchen, it's the stove that becomes that defining element. In the months following the adoption of the new ordinance and kitchen definition, folks who had an interest in homestays, either because they had a homestay permit, or they were interested in inquiring a homestay permit, expressed some concern over the limits of the new definition. So that was the 2018 definition that said, if you had any one of those three things, that you were classified as a kitchen. And they asked council to reconsider that definition. The Planning and Economic Development Committee heard from members of the community and the staff on two separate occasions in the summer of 2018, and after some consideration and exploration into some other related matters, they directed staff to redraft the definition to be more consistent with an earlier interpretation that a kitchen need only to include a stove. And so that's what this, this change proposes to do. So that is really, that is the main element of this amendment. And there are a couple other minor changes to Article 16, which are the homestay standards, and I'll cover those in just a moment. But I wanted to focus on the kitchen definition just a little bit longer and talk... But I wanted to focus on the kitchen definition just a little bit longer and talk about some recent questions that have been raised in relation to this change. And so, there have been some questions about whether or not this change allows both a homestay and an ADU on a single property, or whether it allows rooms to be rented in separate structures, or allows multiple accessory structures. But the truth is, this, this amendment doesn't change any of that. Those things are already allowed today. So, that is already permitted, and this doesn't change any of that. It also doesn't change the rule that prohibits ADUs from being used as homestays. And so, this is a really important point because this is something that has gotten confused, and so I want to make that really clear. Fundamentally, this amendment does two things. First, it relaxes the definition of kitchen to allow more kitchen-related amenities previously, that had not previously been allowed in homestays. So, it kind of broadens what can be offered to homestay guests. And then, secondly, because a stove is now the defining feature of a kitchen, it makes it easier to move between housing and lodging by removing or adding the stove back in. So, if you remove a stove, if you have a dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit, and you remove the stove, you no longer have a kitchen. And when you no longer have a kitchen, you no longer have a dwelling unit. So, that accessory dwelling unit that had been classified as a dwelling unit is now rendered accessory living space. So, it now becomes eligible to be a homestay when it wasn't before. So, the other changes proposed are those changes to Article 16. They're relatively minor. First, we propose to insert a requirement that the homestay operator be a minimum of 18 years of age. And then, secondly, we are removing the requirement that documents establishing proof of residency would be provided as part of the application. Instead, we're going to ask applicants to affirm that they live on the property on a permanent, full-time basis, and make sure that they understand what that means. And we reserve the right to, to ask for that documentation when it's necessary, which would more than likely be in cases where there are enforcement concerns. And that concludes my introduction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions before we open the public hearing? I just want to tell you, thanks for spending six million hours on this. And to everyone else who's worked on it. Now, open the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this issue, please raise your hand. You will have three minutes, and Maggie will be keeping the clock. If you'll watch the lights on the lectern, they'll start at green and then go to orange and red, and the buzzer means stop. Please be respectful of the stop, so we can get to everyone who would like to speak. Yes, Casey in the back, let's start with you, please.
My name is Casey Campfield, council, mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. If I sound like a broken record on this subject, it's because staff and council at the behest of multiple property-owning Airbnb operators keep coming back to the table with proposals to loosen regulations on short-term rentals. Public outcry against short-term rentals swallowing up our available housing led to a partial victory in 2018, an important one. But since then, enforcement has been insufficient, and the fines imposed are far too low to act as a deterrent, which is noted in this report. Today's proposal, in your own words, quote, "will allow accessory dwelling units and other separate living spaces to be used for short-term lodgings by simply removing a stove," quote, "will allow for living spaces to move between long-term and short-term more easily." And then, this one's a real head-scratcher, and I think it's the important thing in this bill that is kind of masked by all of this kitchen language, "simplifies the application process by not requiring documents establishing proof of residency while still requiring affirmation of residency." This last clause is hilarious. I don't take much comfort in your requiring affirmation without proof, and I can't think of another example of the city enforcing an ordinance simply by relying on the goodwill of potential violators. I will now repeat once again why many Asheville citizens want to fight the expansion of short-term rentals. Asheville has the highest percentage of short-term rentals in the entire country, with about 3% of all housing going to that purpose. Asheville has a desperate shortage of available housing, particularly affordable housing, for renters. Half of Asheville's entire population are renters, so this issue affects a huge number of people here. Homeowners are also being affected by their neighborhoods essentially turning into unlicensed commercial hotel districts. Please do not vote to relax restrictions on short-term rentals. Please step up enforcement and fines for violations of existing restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bob Michel, and I am a homestay host here in Asheville. I've had a permit for about three years. And for the last year or so, I've been working with Jackson on the Homestay Network, so I wanted to sort of give some context to the discussion, if I could, and then Jackson, I think, is going to join the discussion as well. So, going back to, as Shannon Tuck mentioned, there was a kitchen definition that was adopted about, a little over a year ago, in January of 2018, that was viewed as being highly restrictive to homestay hosts. And then, that's when the network started sort of working on this issue, working together to collaborate on sort of identifying what works for us and helps the community as well. And so, we, we started working together, and then found out later in October that there were 11 new ordinances that were being considered, and, and so, we went forward and asked if there could be a delay. And, and the city was very kind and generous in giving us about 90 days, and we used that time very wisely, I think, because we had what we called a design studio, a design thinking studio, where we invited constituents of eight different stakeholder groups, including affordable housing, and local businesses, homestay hosts, as well as the platforms and neighborhoods, to discuss the issues surrounding homestays. And out of that came some very interesting findings and a great report that we spent time in January discussing with the city, presenting to neighborhoods and groups, and discussing ways forward, including talking with the platforms about helping to address the issues with non-compliance, and helping us with enforcement in the city. And that brings us to today, where we got, after the last six months or so, had been working along with the community toward some better definitions and better ordinances that we, that you have in front of you today. So, wanted to give that chance to provide that context, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay.
My name is Jackson Tierney, also with the Homestay Network, and I'm going to be representing a group today of three other folks, and so they're in the audience and have decided to yield their time to me.
Okay, folks who are yielding their time to Jackson, please raise your hand. Okay.
So, before I get started, I want to start with a compliment to the city about how they have crafted the homestay rules. And before I get too far into that, I will acknowledge that the last time I complimented the city was in the June Planning and Economic Development meeting, and Vice Mayor Weisler actually chided me that I was, and feigned surprise that we were actually complimenting the city on their good work. But it's true. Some people have looked at me as a short-term rental advocate, but I am a neighborhood advocate.
Maggie?
Yeah. Okay. So, we're calling what Asheville has done, the Goldilocks solution, because I think it's just about right. We have benchmarked dozens of cities across the United States and looked at what works and what doesn't work. And I think a lot of cities are in the position now of trying to walk back their regulations because they allowed too much too soon, and Asheville has taken a very thoughtful and restrictive view, which in hindsight is turning out to be very wise. Austin, Texas, had a great hue and cry when they tried to walk back theirs, and now Portland, Maine, is referring to their SDR program of trying to put the toothpaste back into the tube, which of course cannot be done very easily. So, some of the issues that are affecting neighborhoods, I should say, cities, affordable housing, neighborhood integrity, and property rights are all clashing. And the sweet spot of those, in my opinion, and the research we have done, is homestays. That allows people to participate in the tourist economy, to make things more affordable for them, or if they are a renter. It also requires that hosts spend every night in the home, that they host guests, which puts a control on issues that may arise in the neighborhood. And lastly, the move that was made in January to remove by right whole-house rentals was also a smart move to staunch the flow of investors coming into the town and buying our properties. Is there a way to refocus this so that more of the slide can be shown? So, I have reformatted the current definition of, of kitchens. This is what is in the rule right now, and staff made reference to three things, but there is an or between those three things, so that's actually 14 things. So, I'm going to tell a quick example from an Asheville citizen that had to go through this process. She moved here four years ago, bought a house, got a long-term tenant as the living in the lower level of her house. After two years, property taxes went up, she decided to raise the rent $50 from $900 to $950, communicated that to the tenant. The tenant reported her to the city of operating an illegal long-term rental in the basement of her house. The inspector was invited into the house, the inspector agreed with the renter, the city sent the landlord a notice of violation to cease and desist. The homeowner went to the city and said, "I need this income to live on. What do I need to do?" And they said, "Well, you need to turn your lower level into an approved accessory dwelling unit, or ADU," and that was going to cost about $10,000, and she said, "I don't have that kind of money." And they said, "Well, your alternative is to be a homestay host." She said, "Okay, what do I need to do?" So, she was instructed to remove her stove, which she did. It left a 240 plug, and they said, "Well, you can't leave the plug there." So, she had to remove the plug, get an electrician to pull the wire out, bring it right back to the panel. She also had a built-in microwave that, again, per the standard, had to be removed, so she gutted her cabinetry to remove that piece of equipment, and then go out and buy a standalone microwave that she, excuse me, that she could put on her counter. She also was required to remove the kitchen sink, not remove it, but disconnect it, and make sure she covered it so nobody used it inadvertently. And finally, she was asked to remove a large refrigerator in there, and when she bought the smaller fridge, that she had to build a counter over that small refrigerator, because the rule says, and the last item on the page, is you can't have a space in your area that you're offering for homes, if a large refrigerator could be moved in there. This same homeowner is now 73 years old, and she plans that, to live in this house as long as she possibly can, and wants a home care person to stay, to live in the house when she no longer homestays. So, when she does that, she will have to redo all of the things that she's just tore out. And we've heard from many homeowners that want to have elderly parents in those spaces, they want to have returning college children, or they just want to have long-term friends and family, excuse me, come stay with them. And so, this rule is really getting in the way of the flexibility, and further, it's getting people away from converting to accessory dwelling units, and now making it even more expensive to do so. So, just a couple comments on, I'm going to check my time here. Just a couple comments on who the Homestay Network is. There are now, and this is public record, there are 801 homestay permits in the city of Asheville right now, as of August 1st. And we have banded together to support one another in creating fair, simple, and enforceable rules. We share best practice with one another to enhance the guest experience. We are networking with the business community to feed business to local businesses, and we want to improve the standing in the community, especially with neighborhoods. We also spend a lot of time surveying our organization. The magic number in Asheville is three. Three is the number of jobs that the typical person in Asheville needs to have, or side hustles to make ends meet. Homestay is a very critical piece of that. 71% of our homestay hosts said that they need the money to pay their mortgage. By doing that, it's making affordable housing. And this is a number that really surprises me, that 42% say that without it, they would have to leave their home and probably leave the city. 93% do not have problems in the neighborhood. 97% have never had a complaint. 45% would like some co-hosts. So, this money is changing people's lives. So, we surveyed the organization again on asking people, what would they do to improve compliance? Currently, there are, and these are the city's numbers, not mine, but anywhere between 150 and 300 illegal short-term rentals in the city, and this is where we would like to focus more of our energy to do that. So, there has been some conversations with the platforms to help us, and they have refused. And we understand that the city is now contemplating fining the platforms $500 per day, per day for each illegal listing, and we think this is a tremendous step in the right direction, and we support that. We also look forward to working with the city on the current violations across the city and determining how best to attack those, and use our business skills and our knowledge of how people may be able to get around the rules to work with you to improve it. So, in conclusion, oh, yes, and there's a couple improvements to the system that we, we see, but we will cover those at some future date. But in conclusion, we ask that you vote yes for making the change to the kitchen rule. Thank you.
Shannon, before we invite up the next speaker, can we get some clarity on the issue of, on the staff report, page 2, under cons? It says, "The change in the definition of kitchen will allow accessory dwelling units and other separate living spaces to be used for short-term lodging simply by removing a stove." And we were, you've attached several of the older staff reports because we, in our first rodeo on this one. And the question came up around accessory dwelling unit can be a part of the main structure. It could be like a basement apartment. It could be an attached garage apartment. It could, could also be a detached garage apartment. Is there, and, and in one of the 2018 staff reports, there is a recommendation around clarify that detached structures cannot be used as homestays. We don't have that. So, I assume with this change in the definition of kitchen, an accessory dwelling unit, whether it's a detached accessory dwelling unit, or an attached, some part of the main dwelling structure, you can convert it to a, to a homestay by removing the stove with this change?
That's correct.
Because we don't, we haven't taken a further step of adding any... Because we don't, we haven't taken a further step of adding any other restriction around detached or attached, or any other clarity in that regard?
That's correct, except I would like to clarify one thing is that that happens today. I mean, right now, today, people are converting accessory dwelling units into home stays.
Detached and attached.
Detached and attached. What this proposed change does is just makes it easier, because now we've simplified what constitutes a kitchen, and so you just remove a stove. Whereas before, they had to dismantle more than the stove. They had to remove the refrigerator, they had to remove the sink or cover the sink. So this just kind of makes the process a little bit easier. And that was, that's the flexibility of going back and forth between long-term and short-term.
So can I ask another question? So back, I don't know, I don't know when it was, three years ago, the council loosened up the rules for requiring, for allowing people to have attached dwelling units.
And detached, actually.
I'm sorry, detached dwelling units. You know, kind of didn't, allowed people to build closer to the sidewalks, et cetera.
Larger.
Larger, et cetera. But as part of that, we said that this was to build living units, not, not home stay or short-term rentals. So basically, that would, this, this will reverse that.
It, it, so, so to clarify, I mean, I don't remember how many years ago it was. We loosen up the regulations around the construction of accessory dwelling units to make infill dwelling units easier to build in the city, because it is a solution that cities across the nation are looking at as a way to alleviate the pressure on the long-term rental market. And I think what you're saying is the concern here is that we have this problem already, but this change may further exacerbate the issue of allowing more accessory dwelling units to be used as what I consider to be short-term rentals, but home stay is under this definition. Yes?
Yes.
But only, I mean, so again, if they don't have the stove, they're, then, if they have the stove and they're being used as a home stay, it would be an illegal home stay, correct?
Well, so it would. I mean, the problem is, under the state building code, when you go build an accessory dwelling unit, which the city will come out and inspect and permit, there are these requirements you have to meet. And it assumes you have a kitchen, like, you know, like we would traditionally think of a kitchen. And I think the issue here is that, you know, folks will build these or already have these, and in order to convert them into a home stay, they'll just pull out the stove. Whereas, yes, I would agree, the current definition we have right now is pretty convoluted. But if we really wanted to honor the intent that I think we were headed in the direction of, when we started this whole situation and the construction of the ADU ordinance, we would really only allow some kind of convenience kitchen, like you would find in a hotel room where there was a very small sink and maybe a microwave and, you know, a dorm-sized refrigerator, something where you could have your coffee or store a sandwich or something like that. So, but we haven't gone in that direction. We've gone in the, this other direction. And I know there are arguments on both sides of it, but I think it's important to understand and have clarity around which track we're taking here. Because we're taking a track.
Yeah, and I mean, I have to say, I realize I was, I am on the PED committee, et cetera. But I had not focused on that this is going to allow detached accessory dwelling units to more easily be converted to home stays. I mean, I guess I've always felt, and I guess I've missed this, that detached dwelling units, you know, should be dwelling units, no matter what. So I just, I, I miss this, and I apologize for that, but it causes me a lot of concern. And I'm focusing on detached dwelling units. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to pause on the public hearing portion. We're going to, does anyone else have any clarifying questions?
Not questions. I think I would, what I would say, and I totally agree with you, that the policy track we have been on with ADUs is that they must be, they should be used for long-term renters. And I think that's, that's still the right, that's still the right strategy. What we were seeing, however, is on the ground, is that people were not building, actually building ADUs. They were just building accessory structures that didn't have the kitchen. And so what that means is those structures then can't ever be long-term.
Right. Right, so the philosophy, I know the philosophy, I have talked to Jackson many times, and I know the philosophy is, if you incentivize the building of ADUs, and all people have to do is remove the stove to turn them into a home stay, then that produces this product out there that can be a long-term rental unit more easily, once people get sick of doing a home stay and they want to change it back to a long-term rental. And I, and I, I hear that argument.
And again, it's no different than what's been happening.
Well, this will make it easier, but, okay, so back to the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Well, since we're having our own discussion up here on this item. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Okay, you want me to open the public hearing, on this item? Okay.
Sorry, sorry, I should have, should have said something last beginning. I just got here. I heard a lot of good questions about, you know, public housing, like marketing. Ma'am, speaking of --
Yeah, oh, say your name, sorry.
Oh, Devancey O'Priest.
So we're doing the short-term rental, home stay ordinance amendments.
Okay.
But we have another opportunity for a public comment if you --
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was --
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, my opinion is, is like, you know, Asheville is getting way too much money, you know, far as for public housing. You got 30, I've done my background, you got like 75% of people living in public housing, working people that have jobs, and, you know, public housing actually charging them normal stay, which is $500, $600. God, excuse my nerves. So anyways, I'm going to make it short. It's 75% of hard-working people in public housing that have jobs that working really hard out here in Asheville. One thing about Asheville they don't understand is that it's not, it's not the community, you know, it's not the houses itself, you know, it's just the people that, that, you know, comes into public housing. And I feel like Asheville is not trying to make a change to all these projects, you know, which is like, they're not, they're not trying to make a sacrifice to clean it up, you know, represent Asheville as a city, you know, as one. You know, they need to realize and stop blaming, you know, how much money they waste in any city, you know, this was going on. What they, what they need to understand is that you got homeless people that walk in the streets 24/7. Yeah, we don't, we can't help that they have, they making bad decisions, but, you know, when I first moved here back in 2011, you know, the population was 84,391 people. Today, it's not, it's 91,902 people. So the more people come to Asheville, like different businesses, like American Rental that I worked for, I used to work for the company called Rent World, but they sold it to American Rental. You got new companies coming in, and they applying all these monies into companies, into their company, and they not trying to realize that Asheville is being in debt. You know, that, that's what we don't understand by the cities, citizens here. You know, it starts with, you know, building Asheville up, and I feel like Asheville has not been built since 1984. And the reason why I say that, because it's like mayors after mayors, they comes and goes, they comes and goes, but they not realize what, what is going on in these houses. There's nothing here in Asheville to, it's nothing here for the young folks. Like, if you realize you look downtown, you have more motels, you know, downtown, that you have activities for the young youth. So you might have an 18-year-old person, you know, like, walking around doing what they're not supposed to be doing with a handgun. That, that's the only thing, you know, that's the only thing that I was going to, you know, just reach out to y'all guys and just let y'all guys know that before y'all make any decisions and power the money in, you know, trying to reach out to the projects, you know, that's where it starts.
Thank you.
But y'all have a good day, okay?
Thank you. All right, I did, yeah. Okay, we're, we're on the topic of the short-term rental, okay.
Delvia Diaz, in regard to the short-term, the problem that I see is the way that it is structured, it is not safe as far as how the, I would, in this case, call it landlord situation still. We are not regulating this, I don't think, properly. It is not safe in that keys aren't turned around, locks aren't changed. Some of these situations, I know of friends who have lived in dwellings such as these for over four years. They are still not housed. So they live in these situations, and locks aren't changed, they aren't the same as hotels where you might have key codes. So we have to look at the standards and the way that is done as well. Some of the dwellings inside of larger buildings do have stoves, so there are different situations with, inside of situations. So those have to be looked at as well. Cyber safety, cameras, furnished units, it's not safe. And I just want to add that because just as much as fire safety or removing a stove or things like that, I mean, it's just not safe. And it's not fair to have so many buildings with places that people who are indigenous to the city of Asheville and surrounding without homes, and so many places for people who don't live here to dwell. And it just makes more sense to take care of the people who actually live here than people who don't live here, when we do have hotels. Short version of that.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have comments, questions, motion? Send it back to committee.
Well, that makes me nuts, but, so, I would propose an amendment to this. I, I understand this whole idea of making the definition of kitchen a little bit easier and, and get it, that stove is, you know, the, the way to define kitchen. But I guess what I would say is, could we amend this to include a standard that prohibits a detached home, a detached, a detached AD structure from becoming a home stay? And if, if we can't amend that, then I'm not going to be able to vote for it. I just feel like, from my perspective, a couple years ago, when we, when we loosen up the rules around detached dwelling units, that this was, the whole point of it was to create long-term rentals. And if this ends up allowing short-term rentals, then I feel like, I feel that we've let the neighborhoods down. That was part of the, that was part of the reason, that was all, that was the whole point of loosening up those rules. And if, if we don't have this exclusion of detached ADUs being allowed to be used as home stays, then I just can't support it.
Do you, lawyer, do you feel comfortable with this adjustment on the fly, or is this something we would want to take back and come bring back to another council meeting?
Procedurally, mayor, we need to have a motion first before we can actually have an amendment proposed to that.
Well, and process-wise, I get that. I'm just saying, it's a significant change, and I don't know if staff feels comf, I mean, maybe what we need to do is give a direction.
Yes.
Because it, it may be significant enough that it needs to go back to P and Z, is what I'm thinking anyway. I don't know. You'll have to look at it. No? No? People are jumping out of their seats.
So can I just make a, so, so this is, and one of the speakers --
All right, we're still in discussion mode.
Yeah, yeah. One of, one of the speakers alluded to, back in October of last year, 11, 11 recommendations that staff brought forward. And this was, I think this was one of them, which was to clearly state that accessory dwelling units could not be used as home stays. I will also say, that did not represent a change in the law. It represented a clear statement of the staff's interpretation of existing law. And that is still the law. It, it was always true that you could build an ADU meant for long-term rental, take out the stove, and get a home stay permit. That has always been the case, is my understanding. Again, the recommendation in October was to state that very clearly. And, and that was one of the things that came out of what we, what ended up getting adopted, because it was one of the things that was sparking a lot of controversy. And my comment was, it doesn't represent a change in the law. If, if it's causing controversy, let's just take it out, because it's no, there's no change. We're not making a change. Simply stating more clearly staff's existing interpretation.
I don't know that that is quite accurate. I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't need to do anything tonight.
Well, I think it, again, those recommendations were a whole set of recommendations around clarifying policy, changing some policy to, to help address the, the compliance problems that I think our staff had been seeing. So what I would say is, if we, if, if people want us to explore that, I would suggest sending that back to PED, because there, there are more home stay regulations and issues that need to be addressed, including tackling how we hold the platforms accountable for listing illegal home stays, I mean, illegal short-term rentals, and, and a couple of those other issues. So I would just say, if, if we just send that back to be part of the discussion, the next round of discussion.
And I, I, I would agree with Councilwoman Mayfield on this. I mean, in terms of, you know, some of this is philosophical, right? I think, I think the goal of everybody up here is that we do want more long-term rentals in the city. And I agree with some of the words that Councilwoman Mayfield agreed, talked about earlier, which is that, that being able to have an accessory dwelling unit, or that type of detached structure, that has the ability to move back and forth from short-term to long-term, will actually encourage that. And folks may agree with that, folks may disagree with that. And that's, that's where, that's where I come down on it. And I also come down, and I've said it in some of the PED meetings, you know, my take on this is that, you know, if we've got folks doing this illegally, then we need to come down on them hard. And I've said that before, and again, I'll say that again. And so, so from my perspective, it's, if you're going to do the stuff illegally, we need to come down to you hard. If, if what you're doing is essentially adhering to the law, you know, I want to be able to encourage that. And so, so in my mind, you know, I agree with Councilwoman Mayfield. I'm, I'm supportive of, of the current motion here and the current changes here. You know, I'll also say, you know, two other things. One is, you know, there's some of us who are sitting up here who weren't part of the council, who made the decisions on the detached structures. And so, so we understand there's some of y'all who have been up here who may feel that you're changing, you know, your, what you feel that you have represented to the community in terms of your position. There's some of us up here who didn't make those representations. Also, you know, I think part of the reason this came out, and again, I'll, I'll put this on myself, was when, when we first did this back in January of 2018, what I thought we essentially were going to be voting on at that point was simply prohibiting whole house, short-term rentals downtown in the central business district. And, and part of what I think came up from that was additional language in here that had, that had changed the definition of kitchen. And so, so in my mind, you know, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion on this, and we'll make, we'll make the, you know, I'm willing to make a, make a motion to, to approve the zoning text amendment as, as we currently have it. And again, if we want to go back and revisit the question of what we do with detached structures, you know, let's send that through PED. And we can, we can, we can, we can address it there with any other further changes. But we've done a lot of work to get to this point. And, and I think we should vote this either up or down tonight, and, and see where we go with the other issues.
You know, I, I'm not on PED. I have never, I have never been supportive of, of these changes. I have met with the group, and I, and I know Jackson has organized a whole group that met, and staff has been interacting with them, and they've had regular meetings, and I, I, you know, that's their choice to have gone through that process and do that. But I, I don't -- But I, I don't favor the direction we're going in, and I haven't ever voiced any support for going in this, in this direction. I would rather see this not allow any kind of homestay in a detached unit, in any accessory dwelling unit. And for that matter, not, you know, not make it easy to simply modify a kitchen by pulling out the stove. I'd like to see us go back to the purity of the homestay definition, which is, in your home, whether you're a long-term renter or a homeowner, you can rent up to two bedrooms in your home. And if people want to put in a convenience center, as I described previously, I'm calling it a convenience center, as it was called, that has a small sink and a microwave and a small refrigerator to accommodate their temporary guests, you know, I think, I think we should personally move the ordinance in that direction. You know, I'm, I am alarmed by what we're seeing. I, we, we do have, I heard Casey said the highest per capita number of Airbnb units of any city. I've heard second highest, first, second, that's still really high. That, that, that is no small impact on a city in terms of rental housing available to people. And I, I think you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube, you can't put the genie back in the bottle. I'm very glad we've moved to quickly get on top of this issue when we did. I think we would be in a much worse situation now if we didn't. And, you know, I say all this, in the meantime, just yesterday, I, I emailed all of our legislative delegation, I copied all of council up here, because we're hearing more and more rumors down in Raleigh that there is a push from the Airbnb industry to preempt all cities in North Carolina from regulating Airbnbs at all, at all. And we've been dealing with this sort of under-the-surface threat all summer. There's not a bill right now introduced in the legislature, there is not one. But there are what are called committee substitute bills that have been drafted and floating around the legislature. And it is a, and they're of course never gonna adjourn, because we don't have an agreement on the budget, so they're down there. And I understand that the risk is that the real estate folks that are here who are organized and lobby the legislature, coupled with Airbnb lobbyists, will go down there and try to make an end run around us. And I don't want that. I feel like we have worked really hard for a really long time to come up with a compromise that works for our community, and I'm concerned that this will move, just move us in a direction that is not healthy for our community and not healthy for the people that live in our community. So I appreciate that you all took it upon yourself to do all this work and to engage with staff and to come up with all these different points, but I, I don't endorse it and I, I think it is the wrong direction to be going in.
So let me, let me just suggest that-
But there's a motion.
I don't think there was a motion.
No, I think BJ did.
I think, what I heard him say, he was happy to make a motion, but I did not hear it.
Well, no, I mean, out of a courtesy for everyone here, I think we should have it. I don't wanna, out of a courtesy here, I think, I think folks should have their say on it. I am, you know, I, personally, I think we ought to vote this thing up or down. It's before us now, I don't think it's time to pull it now. We've gone through this whole process. If, if folks, you know, don't, don't agree with it, we vote the thing down. If folks agree with it, we vote, we vote for it. You know, but, but if there's anyone, anyone else who would like to make comments up here, you know, I'm, I'm saying I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, you know, if there's any further discussion that folks would like to have up here prior to doing so.
Well, I've, I'm sorry, I'm gonna preempt you. I'm gonna make a motion that we send this back to PED and that we not vote on it tonight. Sorry.
Uh-oh, okay, Ben, what are you on?
Is that all right? Can I not do that?
There, there's no motion on the table right now, so you can make a motion. However, I think that the current item at least needs to be removed as part of that, so that it's adjudicated as well.
Can you give her a suggested motion to do that?
I would, I would suggest that a motion be made to defer consideration of this item. Council has the authority under the rules to defer consideration for up to 100 days. That can be revived by a separate motion within that period at a later meeting.
All right, then I move that we defer this motion to a later time period and that we send this issue and the others that have been raised here tonight back to PED for consideration.
Do we need a date certain?
You do not for this motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I need to take comment on this deferment motion?
You do not, this is a procedural motion.
All right. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Uh, okay, we better do hands. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? You got that, Maggie? All right, thank you. That concludes the public hearings agenda. We have one item of unfinished business, that's a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Nelson, Byrd, Woltz for design and planning to create a concept plan for the redevelopment of city-owned properties at Haywood Street and Page Avenue. And Todd Ogletchany is here to talk to us about it.
We're ahead of ourselves. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Todd Ogletchany, Planning and Urban Design Director. Tonight, staff is requesting that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the Nelson and Byrd Woltz team to create a master concept plan for city-owned property on Haywood Street and Page Avenue in downtown Asheville. During my presentation, I will explain what those master planning activities would include and what the city has to gain from entering to a contract with this team. I will also review the scope of work specifically for the project, the timeline, review the cost and the value in hiring this firm. As you know, the site has a long and complicated development history for the city of Asheville. In the early 2000s, the few sites were initially acquired for the purpose of amassing property to construct a parking garage and other mixed-use development. Later, the city entertained a proposal for a hotel that was followed by a potential use of the property for an office use. As a result of all these years of nearly not having community consensus for this site and for this area, city council initiated a visioning process back in 2016. That visioning process was led by 18 community members and was facilitated by Asheville Design Center. That vision report and study was completed and presented to council back in March of 2017. That report included possible programmable uses for the site. And after that report was presented to council, council later that year then directed staff to release a request for qualifications for further design services. Basically, how we would further design the site with those uses in mind and that vision in mind, and how we would implement that vision plan. Back in the fall and winter of 2017, a selection committee recommended the Nelson, Byrd, Woltz Landscape Architecture team. And then in December of 2018, the Planning and Economic Development Committee recommended pursuing a contract. At that time and during that year-long gap, there was no funding identified for the project. Staff had been in kind of constant negotiations with the Nelson and Byrd team for a contract that initially exceeded over $400,000. And as I'll get into later in the presentation, that's now at $292,000. Back in January of this year, council directed staff to, to try to find that funding and continue to negotiate, negotiate with the Nelson and Byrd team. And then for the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, we have allocated funding for the project. Just as a reminder of some of the content within that vision report, the report included a number of active and passive uses for the site. And it also included a bubble diagram, which is kind of the preliminary design concept for how different uses could work together. This type of bubble diagram and work, and also existing conditions and history analysis were all part of that initial vision report. The, based on that, that vision report, we're, we're not really looking to duplicate efforts with this next phase. We've done a lot of analysis. However, the Nelson and Byrd Woltz team recommends a process that they utilize, not just throughout the country, but worldwide. They leave no stone unturned in terms of analysis, looking at the history of the site. They will actually will build off that vision report and that, and that work that was already completed. They will not duplicate that work, but they will continue to identify a real achievable plan for this area that is, I think, acceptable by the community, that honors the vision report and the work that the community has put in to identifying the uses, but that's also fiscally achievable for the city. The initial work would include what we call a discovery phase that would include some baseline graphics for the, the design framework for the site and the surrounding area, as well as a public meeting on the site. And then the concept design phase would be the second phase of this project, would include up to three preliminary concepts that we'd be, that would be developed. As I mentioned, the intent is to create a plan that is achievable and that's realistic. Therefore, the scope of services includes programs that would be tested for physical feasibility, economic viability, social impacts, as well as opportunities for, for partnerships to implement the plan. That plan would have some further refinement and a preferred concept would be identified. That would be presented then to downtown and planning and zoning commissions and would conclude with a presentation to city council. As I mentioned, the, the concept master plan for this site doesn't just include the site, but it would include a design master plan for this area that would look at the street rights of way. And the team has some traffic planners and engineers available to look at possible reconfigurations of surrounding streets, as well as pedestrian connections to and from the site. And we would also would engage surrounding stakeholders to look for partnership opportunities and to identify other opportunities for designing this, this real important site in the middle of downtown. The consultant team includes a multidisciplinary team of landscape architects. That, that team would be led by Nelson, Byrd, Woltz. As I mentioned, they, they are a world-renowned landscape architecture firm who recently completed the park master plan for the Karen Crag Nolan Park. Thomas Woltz, the lead of that firm, also has a home in the area and visits Asheville very frequently. I also wanted to highlight James Lima, who I think is a very important piece to this. James Lima works on development strategies, again, that are achievable and realistic. He would look at programming, economic feasibility, and financial management strategies for the site, which I think is very important. The team also includes local Samsill architects, a local engineering design firm, as I mentioned, traffic planning and design, as well as a, a team or a firm that looks at possible long-term maintenance considerations for any type of public space or civic space on the site. From city staff, we would be managing the project and we've identified what we're calling a vision implementation committee that would include the original vision committee members that have all been invited to participate on that committee. The purpose of that committee and their role would be to be champions for implementing that vision plan that was accepted by council and the community. In terms of a timeline, we're looking to conclude a final recommended concept by possibly March or April, spring of 2020. We would initiate work immediately. That would include a public open house at 68 Haywood Street at the beginning of, of October. We would then look at presenting to council and getting some feedback on some of the initial preliminary designs, those three design options that I mentioned. We would further engage the community on, on that concept, design, and master plan. And ultimately, we would be looking to recommend a preferred alternative or master concept plan for the site and area. As I mentioned, the cost for the project would be up to $292,000. That is predicated on, again, this multidisciplinary team that has a lot of experience throughout the country in working on very complex sites such, such as this. We would look at a comprehensive analysis that builds off the vision report, that would not duplicate that report, it would build off it to, again, plan for a plan, plan that could be implemented by city council. We would look at continued consensus building to support the project. And ultimately, we would develop a master concept plan that is economically viable and that addresses community needs. So again, what we're looking for tonight is looking for your consideration to authorize the city manager to execute this contract, as well as your endorsement of the vision implementation committee. And just to note that that does not require a formal vote on your part. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councils have any questions? Go ahead.
So Todd, the staff report on this says that they would produce up to two alternative development scenarios, and you just said three. Is it, it had always been three, and so I was a little surprised to see that the staff report said two. Is that just a mistake?
I'll go back to our scope here. My understanding is that it is up to three, you know, concepts.
That's great. And then I think you just answered my second question, which is that the vision implementation committee, we're not creating a new committee, you're proposing to reconvene the group that came up with the vision? And do we, do we, I guess you probably haven't polled those folks to see if they're willing to come back together or, but that's, but that's where you wanna start?
I actually, I have reached out to that original visioning committee and, and we've heard back from around seven or so of them so far to date.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Lady in the back? Is it about this topic? Okay, come on up. So once again, if you'd say your name and you'll be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Elvia Diaz. My question was, what were any of the plans to have city work go directly to persons who live in Asheville, Buncombe County, and general vicinity? As a person who has studied the rise and fall of cities at Hopkins, work tends to go to, or gets promised to people who work within the city limits, and then it goes actually out to someone else. So I wanna make sure that that work that is coming into the city goes to the people who need those jobs that are here. So that's just my, my comment.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to Mayor. Oh, it's not public?
No, this one's not a public, so, do we have a motion? To adopt the resolution?
I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Nelson, Byrd, Woltz in the amount not to exceed $292,000. And I guess it's not part of the suggested motion, but to support the implementation plan where we use the team, the visioning team.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Vice Mayor, if you will do the boards and commissions.
All right, so for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the, I will make a motion that we reappoint Andy Barnett, Sage Turner, Joe Eichen, Eichelheimer, and to appoint Paul Heathman in the banker position, the loan and/or commercial expertise position, and to appoint Amber Banks and Marji Bukowski. That's a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. For the, I-20- For the I-26 aesthetics connector project committee, the boards and commissions recommends the appointment of Foster De La Jose and Lynn Raker.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Citizens Police Advisory Committee, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Jeremy Spielman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the Multimodal Transportation Commission, the Boards and Commissions recommends the reappointment of David Nutter and the appointment of Elizabeth Medlock in the transit interest, Randy Warren in the bike and ped interest, Michael Stratton in the bike and ped interest, and Kenneth Armstrong in the greenway interest, and Patricia Katz in the at-large seat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and for the appointment of the Asheville representatives for lodging for 100 rooms or less, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that we interview two applicants, Fatique Batka and James Poole, at our September meeting in the afternoon.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. Madam Mayor?
We're going to do public comment. All right, that concludes our printed agenda, and we have a closed session tonight, but we're going to do that at the end of the council meeting, and I've got a number of people signed up to speak under public comment. The first is Bryn Estelle.
We don't take a public comment during the boards and commissions appointments, but you can make a public comment during this portion.
Hi, I had some folks giving me time.
Do you have three people that are yielding their time to you? All right, so the three people who are yielding their time are not going to speak during public comment?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Hi, I'm Brenna Estelle. Thank you all for your time. Just get rolling here. Again and again, the people of this city have come to these chambers to call upon you to do the right thing, to fight a racist gerrymander, to counter an unjust police department, to fund vital services, to stop the eviction of the flat iron tenants, to fight the industries that every day devour more land, more community, and more lives. Ashevilleans are angry. We are angry because our voices and concerns have been repeatedly dismissed and ignored. This summer, we watched as a budget that prioritizes Evermore police funding and a rather lavish pay hike for high-level staff was crafted and passed, within indifference to the public's wishes for improved transit, a just wage for city workers, and the most basic of environmental protections. Ashevilleans told you that was what we wanted, and we were ignored. We watched as even the most basic NAACP policing reforms are delayed and then gutted, council's clear direction ignored by the same institutions that inflict brutality and uphold segregation. We watched as you don't just fail to halt the gentrification destroying this town, but encourage and participate in it. Now, we are here again, as you promised, to fight a state law that rigs our election system to crush black voting power, something 75% of Asheville's people oppose, something you have the power to largely undo and have once again failed to act. You claim that you're listening, you will fight this injustice, but somehow never managed to place any action on the agenda. Once again, you have chosen to do nothing. We crowd again and again into this tiny space, watching as more of us are relegated to an overflow room, and it is fair to wonder, is this considered a failure or a feature of this space? Is it convenient for council to not have to face too many of your city's people at once while it's making decisions that we so hate? And when people have raised their voices, when they have applauded those who, unlike too many on council, have dared to speak, we are told to be silent. We are told that council has a rule that prevents the public from demonstrating our support for a different way, or our disapproval at the way that you have chosen. Conveniently, this prevents those watching from home from hearing the public's will. But somehow, when a senior city staffer is being applauded, or when the city touts an award or makes a proclamation, no such rule is applied. It is only when the people of Asheville dare stand up, dare point out the obvious, dare call for something better, that we are told the rules necessitate our silence. It's untrue. There is no such rule. There's no rule against clapping in council's rules of procedure. However, it would be convenient for council if such a rule were to exist, and so we are asked to present as though it does. And further, even if such a rule did exist, there is no punishment for violations of decorums, there is no ordinance or law laying out any such penalty. In other words, if we choose not to clap, we are doing that out of the goodness of our hearts. And so tonight, as you again fail to act, we defy your arbitrary and frankly made-up rules, we will remind you as the people, not you who hold the power in this city, we are watching. All this watching has left us livid. We will not be silenced. Thank you very much.
Out of the goodness of your heart. Okay, next speaker is Michelle Myers. No, Michelle Myers? No, okay. Sarah Benoit.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Benoit, and I just wanted to come again tonight to voice how important I think it is that we stand against districting of our voting in Asheville. I'm really passionate about this issue because I think that it speaks to a lot of different issues going across North Carolina and not just our own city. As we really move into, I think, a very stressful political climate with the upcoming presidential elections, I think a lot of us are feeling really frustrated at how disempowered we all feel, but especially I think this comes home to people who live in North Carolina and feeling like it's really, really difficult, especially for those of us that are part of minority communities, to work together to make any actual change. And I think, looking at Asheville as a citizen here, I'm not a citizen of one neighborhood, I'm not a citizen of one part of Asheville, I'm a citizen of the entire city, and I've spent 20 years here, I've built multiple businesses here. I believe it's incredibly important that all of us be able to vote together as a community to make decisions about who our leadership is and what kind of policies we want to see. I think this is not just going to affect our elections, but moving forward, it's going to affect everything related to how we will survive the coming crisis that's happening across our globe right now. So when it comes to the climate, when it comes to social justice, when it comes to LGBTQ rights, these things are being eroded every day in many, many ways across our country. And I think if we split our city into districts, we don't allow many, many minority and marginalized communities to come together and effectively make change. I really do understand that there are many arguments out there for the opposite. I really appreciated the city attorney having such a great meeting in which I feel like our options were explained. I still feel deeply inside, and I hope everybody got my email, that I was really uncomfortable with lots of white people talking about what's appropriate for communities of color. I think if those communities felt like that was, districting our elections was right for them, they would have shown up and said so. And so I was really uncomfortable with people who are not part of those communities speaking for them and feeling like it was their right to do so. I really hope that we'll take action on this. I really hope that we will see it as something that has to happen, not just in Asheville, but across North Carolina. And I know that there's a lot of limitations to living in this state, and I know that our constitution limits what our city can do, but I think as we go into the future with all the different problems and challenges that we're going to face across the board, we have to realize that we can't keep saying yes to the state leadership. You know, this comes to the discussion of moderates versus so-called radicals when it comes to the Democratic Party, but I don't think it's radical to believe that we're in a climate crisis, and I think it's important that we take action on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane McCarthy? If I'm saying that right?
Sorry, I couldn't read the handwriting on the last name. Good evening, everyone. Probably the tallest person to ever use this mic. I'm Shane McCarthy. I'm a member of the Sunrise Movement, which is a youth-based nationwide organization whose goal is to fight the climate crisis. And I wanted to thank all of you who supported our 100% renewable goals, which is in the process of being rolled out now. This plan has the power to be really transformative to Asheville, but it's still vulnerable, especially as we're still figuring out what it is and who's in charge of implementing, who's in charge of implementing it. And if it's in the wrong hands, it could essentially be meaningless. And that's why I'm here tonight. I want to make sure the 100% renewable plan is in good hands. And that means it should be in your hands, in the hands of Buncombe County officials. And right now, I'm worried that the plan might not be in good hands after some upcoming procedural changes. The Energy Innovation Task Force, or EITF, was created with the narrow focus of preventing a second gas power plant at Lake Julian, and they were successful in that goal, but now the EITF is being restructured as a permanent committee, which will have oversight of the 100% renewable plan. This is a problem because Duke Energy has a lot of presence and a lot of influence on the EITF, and they have every incentive not to want 100% renewable Asheville. They're also going through this restructuring between meetings of their supervisory committee, which is SACE, and it's unclear if there's going to be any chance for public comment on this matter. So here's what we want. Don't let the EITF have control over the renewable plan. We want it to be in your hands, because you represent the people of Asheville, and you're accountable to the people of Asheville. We can't have something so important be run by just a few people under the shadow of Duke Energy. The most effective way to take back this power is to put the renewable plan in the city's comprehensive plan. When it's in the comprehensive plan, it will guide the decision-making for each city department and for each decision that city council makes. This gives us the best chance of making a real impact with this plan. According to the UN, we have just 11 years to ditch fossil fuels to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. That's not just an issue, that's an emergency. So let's call it an emergency. My generation is calling on you to act now and declare a climate emergency like so many other cities have. This is an emergency. Let's act like it and make 100% renewable Asheville a guiding principle for our city.
Would you be so kind to leave your comments? I'd like to read them if you don't mind.
Yeah. You give it to Max.
The next person signed up to speak is Elvia Diaz, and please tell me if I said your name or...
Elvia. All right. Say it again. Thank you allowing, for allowing me to volunteer for you. The issue of homelessness has been very near and dear to me and part of me. I consider every homeless person a member of my family, as well as housed people. With everything that I've heard today, one of the most eye-leveling things about tenants and landlords is equal rights. A lot of the things that I hear with people who are housed and people who are not housed, Elvia, I'm so afraid to tell someone I don't have heat because I don't want to be evicted. My, my basic premise for what I've written today is simply to plant this bug. Everywhere else I've been and lived and people that I've talked to are able to put their rent in escrow. And so what people say is, "Elvia, everybody has to pay their rent." I said, "I said escrow," and most people know what an escrow account is. We place our rent into a bank. It is overseen so that when we have issues of things that are broken, because we pay this rent so that we can have what is called right of domain, if I can't take over this space, then I can't live here. And when I can't live here, I can't give you money. I either have to find somewhere else to live, or I, I, what do I do? I can't keep paying rent somewhere where I can't live. So that the landlord has to fix this. Then the judge gets to decide, "Well, it's been four months, so here's what you get out of escrow, and here's what the tenant gets back." So here we have this landlord who's like, "Well, I can't afford to fix all these things." So we, then we develop these programs to where, "Well, we can make it so that you can fix this," because we have all these great programs to put all these people who can't afford these houses, right? That nobody wants to buy into because we don't want those people. But if we are able to keep these properties to a level of, we cannot see each other because we're not up here or down here, we're able to work with everyone and so that everybody can sort of prosper. We're not above each other, we're, we're at the same level. So this is just something that I want to, you know, it, it's as simple as that, we can put everybody at a sort of economic level to where you need to fix your property up for, for your tenant. You can work with our program because we have all these other things that we can do so that you can have all these great tenants who, yeah, we all fail. Sometimes we fail, but everybody deserves a second chance. I mean, that's, that's basically it.
The next person signed up to speak is Nina Tovish.
Good evening. My name is Nina Tovish. Hello, mayor and council members. Effectively, we're six months away from primaries in 2020. That's really soon. The clock is ticking. We still have no action from city council on the question of districting. This is wildly unfair to people who might wish to run for office. It's very difficult for them to know how to plan, how to raise money, whether they're eligible to run or not. It's a mess. Given that we have not seen action from council in more than a year and a half, I did hear from some of you last time that you were talking about amending the charter. I was hoping to see something about it on today's agenda, but there was nothing. I think it's now inevitable that we will need a citizens petition in order to address this as a referendum issue. We need to start now because time is running out for an effective election process. So that's comment A. Just to let you know, there will be a citizens petition. The only way to avoid that is for you all to act, amend the charter in a timely fashion so that those who may wish to run for office and so that the citizens know what is going to happen in the upcoming election. I think it's critically important. It can't wait any longer. The process to amend the charter will take at least a few months. Time is a wasting. Second issue, you've heard it from me before, I'm back here again to ask you, how many hotel rooms are too many? When will we hear from council about a guiding picture for what tourism development looks like, that is sustainable for our city, that supports our infrastructure, that serves the citizenry? Again, I ask you to speak out on this and to give us a roadmap for how you're thinking about this issue. Thank you for your time.
Just a couple of announcements on that note. At our next council meeting, the council will set the public hearing on the hotel moratorium, and I think the manager will speak more to what to expect, actually, probably she won't speak at the next meeting about it, but at the meeting where we actually take up the moratorium about what you could expect in that regard during, during a moratorium period if it were to pass council.
And that issue is on the PED agenda for tomorrow at 4:00.
Yeah, and Thursday. Tomorrow's Wednesday.
This has lasted so long, I thought we were into Wednesday.
And the council is also having an affordable housing work, work session on Friday, September 6th at 8:45 until 1:00 at the banquet hall at the, what was the US Center, and soon will be the Cherokee Center, something like that. We'll just call it the Civic Center in the interim. So just, you brought up those couple of points, so I thought was a good opportunity to make some announcements. Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Diane, I think it's Allen. Is that, is that right? Did I do it right? Oh, look, it just goes wrong. It's good. It's all right. Your N is like a flap. Yeah.
Good evening. Thanks for the laugh, I needed that. Diane Allen, I'm bus operator, and I'm union president for ATU 128. I have a couple items I like to talk about. I brought it up before here, and I brought it up at the Transit Committee, is the weapons policy for Nashville, North Carolina. It seems that the Asheville City buses are owned by the city, but there isn't a policy for any... but there isn't a policy for any weapons on the buses. And I come to you here tonight urgently. We had an event that happened Saturday morning. We had a gentleman that was very upset at another passenger. He pulled his knife out, a filet knife. He hovered over that passenger and then ran to our bus driver. Very angry. I don't know if you could have seen it on him or not, but according to Section 1242 in the Code of Ordinances, "No person shall possess, use, or carry any firearm, gun, rifle, pistol, air rifle, spring gun," and it goes on. Then it says, "including arrows with metallic tips or sharp tips of any nature designated to penetrate or propel above our spring device in any park or other city facility." Further, "No person shall possess, use, or carry any knife other than an ordinary pocket knife," which means a small knife designed for carrying in a pocket or purse, "in which has a cutting edge and point entirely enclosed by its handle, and that may not be opened by throwing explosive or spring action or a kitchen knife when it is used and intended to be used for ordinary purposes." Once again, it says, "in any park or other city-owned facilities." When will RETPdLs have the right to issue or ban anyone for a weapon on the bus? Or can they now? We need protection. I have sent out an email in regards to HB 1139. We have one cosponsor. We need more. Ms. Adams is the only cosponsor in North Carolina that we have for this Bus Operator and Pedestrian Protection Act. If you don't have that in your email, I think I've sent that a couple of months ago. I'd be glad to send it to you again. It's really huge, I'm not going to get into that, I don't have time, I'm already in orange. Service animals, we have an issue with that. According to 323 Codes of Ordinances, "The owner of every dog and cat over four months of age shall have vaccinated against rabies." And then go down to C. "A rabies vaccination tag is also furnished to the owner. Dogs are required to wear the tag at all times." Now regardless if this is a service animal or not, there's still no clarifie, okay?
You know, I mean, you can... No, no, you don't need to do that. You have like legitimate operational transit issues. You should be emailing this bullet point to the manager, and please copy us. She's writing it down as you're saying it. If you can hand your written notes...
I have some copies made.
Yes, please hand it to Maggie and...
Because, I mean, this is not the first time I brought this up.
Yeah, no, no, that's... Thank you. The next person I have signed up to speak is Dan. And the last name, I think... I don't think it's...
Well, whoever it is gave the address.
This could have been somebody who already spoke, but I think...
He already spoke.
He already spoke, okay. Joe Minicozy is next.
What's that? I'm pretending I have paper here. I wanted to make a public comment, but I also wanted to talk with you about I-26, because I was one that stepped off the committee, so I wanted to give you some of my feedback on that, and I've never done that before. So that's what I was hoping to make a comment earlier, just to let you all know my experience on that committee and why I resigned. Is that possible?
Well, you're doing it right now.
Okay, well, I still want to make a public comment, but about something else that's not on the agenda. So I didn't know whether with an agenda item, you typically do it with the issue. Does that make sense?
I'm so confused. You can talk about what you want to talk about, maybe we better restart your clock, though.
Really quickly, with I-26, this was the original concept for Alternative 4, and when we did Alternative 4B, this was our concept, which is basically take all the spaghetti and stick it together into one line and try to minimize the footprint. And we were asked by DOT, when we went through the process with you all, when you gave us consulting money to hire a bridge engineer, that they told us we weren't allowed to do a double-decker bridge. And we asked why, and their comment was, "We don't have a double-decker bridge in North Carolina." And we're like, you know, surely Kentucky's got like three of them, we could do one. But we went along with it. But our concept was a bridge like this. This was the Bowstring Trust Bridge. It's a double-decker bridge in Portland, Oregon. They actually designed bike racks to look like the bridge, or something like this. This actually has an observatory at the top of it, where you can go up and see 360-degree views. So could we do something more aesthetically appealing with the bridge in addition to the highway? Does it have to just be a highway? So as we were working with DOT, this is what they did to the drawings in May of 2008. You'll notice they took the bridge, which is in red, and they stretched it all the way down over the top of Patton Avenue, and that's when we freaked out. So the design center basically said, "We're out. We're not working with you anymore, you're not being genuine with our designs." And also, they did this. This is what it said in the NEPA document with churches in Burton Street. And it says, "Clear as day in black and white, no churches will be displaced." Yet we showed DOT and the community that there is a church, the Community Baptist Church in Burton Street, that's being whacked by a sound wall. Now, because we pointed that out, and we brought it up at the EPA, the EIS document was pulled. So we currently don't have an EIS document as part of the NEPA. So the EIS document, the rules that we're supposed to be following. So that was... The NEPA Act says that all reasonable alternatives are supposed to be considered, but it also says that we're not supposed to act unless we have the available documentation. So the EIS document is basically their environmental statement saying, "Here's how we're messing you up. Now you all have to be aware of that, but we have to tell you how we're messing you up." And we still don't have that document. So while I was on the committee, you know, we were told... You know, this was our original design idea, the original intent, to minimize the footprint, do something cool as a bridge. And this is the bridge that they're giving us over I-26. It's 22 lanes wide. And several of us on the aesthetics committee were just like, "Could we talk about the bridge?" And the DOT people were like, "No, you can't." And we all really need to understand what this impact is going to be and how big this is going to be in our community. It's pretty scary, if you look at the drawings. And we need to honestly go into this with our eyes wide open. We also are owed the information about the impacts by our DOT, and they're not giving them to us. So we shouldn't be deciding anything until we have that document. We shouldn't be negotiating anything. We are federally owed that document, and we don't have it. So once we were told, and my committee, I don't have a lot of time to give. I travel a lot. And if I'm going to be sitting on a committee where we're only going to get $7 million to put lipstick on a pig, there's no amount of lipstick that can cover that pig. So that's my comment I wanted to give to you, why I resigned. It just wasn't worth my time. I think that you all really need to investigate that committee. And as a public comment, I wanted to make a public comment. Can I do that, or am I out?
No, that was your public comment.
Okay.
But you can email us, it's important.
Esther, can I just make a couple of announcements about that, about I-26?
Yeah.
Whichever.
Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? So we got a couple people.
Good evening, I'm Peter Landis. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but redistricting came up, so I thought I would. I think none of us are happy with Raleigh steamrolling the city of Asheville. And there's an understandable urge to just say, "We're going to fight back, we're going to..." Well, I think the city attorney ably presented what the options are. Thank you, it was a terrific job. But the options are limited. I think the one place where we might have a shot would be a lawsuit, a very expensive lawsuit, which the odds of winning are... I don't know what the odds are. I think to thumb our nose at them and say, "The heck with you, we're just going to get rid of districts and go back to the old way," is sort of like a guy with a pea shooter going up against someone with a bazooka. We really don't have... We have no power. They can just do what they want. I think Dylan Law states it, I think it's ridiculous, but that's what they can do. I think that Councilman Kapoor's suggestion is a pretty good one. That, okay, if we have districts, let's have five districts, each of which will elect someone. Let's expand the council, add two more members, where you'd have, what would it be? Would it be three at large, four at large, plus... Three at large, plus your own representative, plus the mayor. Each voter would have a say in electing five members to this council. I think it's an option worth looking at, worth considering. I think from a selfish point of view, it would give you two more members to share the burden of committee work. It would allow the legislature to sit back and feel that they'd done what they wanted to, but it would also allow the council here to make some alterations that I think would be beneficial to the city as a whole. I think, as the mayor said before, there's this move that's being considered, sort of sub rosa right now, about eliminating the ability of the city to regulate short-term rentals. And my guess is, if we really want to kick them off, we'll thumb our nose... That's two metaphors, or two at the same time. Let's just go back to the way it was, see how happy they are with that, and see if not only they reimpose them, but at the same time, penalize us by, and the rest of the state potentially, by eliminating our ability to regulate short-term rentals. So I think you might consider Councilman Kapoor's proposal seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, my name is Scott Owen. And I came to the meeting tonight because I was disappointed to see that the item having to do with the district elections was not on the agenda tonight. I was at the meeting where it was discussed, you know, our district options. I strongly support standing up for our current system. And I don't wish to repeat what everyone else has said already, but if we are going to do something, I do understand that time is of a necessity. And if we are not going to do something, the council will be very transparent about that so that us, the people, know where we're heading with this, and we know soon. So that's the one thing. The other thing I would like to throw in is when we were talking about the area over on Hayward Street. When that conversation was taking place, there were quite a few people that were concerned about the prices that were being thrown around, millions of dollars on this park. I'm really happy that the park is moving forward, but one of the things that a lot of people were very concerned with was the cost. I'm very glad to see that the cost of these consultants has come down a little bit. And I hope that city council will keep it in mind that we don't want to put ourselves into a position where we're fighting for funds and pitting each other, people who are trying to get transportation and people who are trying to get a park, where we're not pitting these groups against each other. And we do do everything we can to keep the cost of the park down by being creative in the ways that we move forward with the park and trying to get as much public input and volunteer help from both individuals and from our great nonprofits that we have here in Asheville. I think this project can be done in a way that it's not only less painful, but actually something that could be really fun for our city if we come together. But we need leadership from the city to bring people together so that they understand, that the public understands that this is a public project and that we are going to be included in the process. So thank you very much on both of those issues.
Yes, anyone else wishing to comment tonight?
Hi, my name is Michelle Myers. I'm here to speak to what's happening with the 100% draft report that we have out. You can comment on it until Friday. If you haven't read 130 pages yet, I recommend that everyone does.
This is on renewable, right?
Yes, on renewable energy, sorry. So the draft report does a pretty good job of giving us a snapshot of what's happening at the state level and what limitations we have under our current power structure, and even some ways that the city can be involved in advocating for some policy change at the state level. But it doesn't go as far as talking about what our loading orders should be, how transition to like electric vehicle fleet might influence our energy consumption and how to balance those things. There's really a lack in the implementation plan, I would say, of what's being provided from the CADMS group. I commend the city and the county for jumping and bringing experts in to help advise on this ambitious goal, so thank you very much for that. I wonder if we can get some more of that technical advice from the CADMS group. I know Bridgette has at least mentioned that they did do some citing to figure out which buildings are actually, were like able to even put solar on in terms of the municipal buildings in the city and the county. I don't think they've done any citing for like, even like, I've seen other cities do site analysis of solar potential across the entire city, even on private properties, which might help identify what voluntary partnerships we could potentially explore for the long-term implementation plan or the 2042 goal. Right now, the picture's relatively bleak, honestly, about how we're going to transition residences, businesses, non-municipal buildings. And I think we need to think about what private-public partnerships we can develop as city officials with businesses to try to get voluntary early adopters. And there's no mention of that even anywhere in the plan. So it really says you can only get to 45% renewable energy by 2042 if we make all these ambitious policy changes, which is not the stated goal of the resolution. I do think that it is a very creative idea, and maybe even the best idea, to have it be part of the, was it Living Asheville Comprehensive Master Plan. I think that would really embed it into the different departments in the city. And also, I think there's a really good community outreach plan associated with that. As I understand it, all of the different neighborhood associations are developing how this plan will impact their neighborhoods. And I think that's really necessary if we're going to do representative outreach to the whole community. And I would also like to apologize to Councilmember Weisler, who I refer to as mayor in the previous Boarding Commission meeting. And that's how I will end my time.
I know, but I thought that might be weird, too, because that would be an insult.
So anyway, I realized later my mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane, you have a closed session motion. Kim's going to speak first, but then, we've got a closed session motion.
Good evening, Kim Roney. Tonight, I'm standing in solidarity with neighbors providing feedback about the CADMS report and the plan for Asheville and Buncombe to reach its goals for 100% renewable energy. First, thank you for resolving to get to 100% renewables and for your commitment of our fiscal and staff resources to take on this report. What I'm concerned about is that the report doesn't show us getting to our goal without a heavy demand on recs. So while we work to change our state legislation to allow our own utility sources and cooperatives, it looks like it's time for the community to come together and support our goals with demands. So here are some that I share with my neighbors. One, the impact of climate change will impact our entire community and touch every part of our lives, so we need a community engagement process that's at least as thorough as the GARE process the city has recently been using. Additionally, as an important part of public input opportunity, we need SACE to review the EITF biolos during its restructure. And since the EITF is going to be made permanent, that their meetings must be recorded and streamed, and all presentations be included in the meeting documents. Two, I'm among those requesting Asheville joint cities across the country and declaring a climate emergency with an appropriate response plan. A Green New Deal for Asheville with our community partners and resourceful neighbors includes a response that matches the scope of the urgency at hand. And I'm hopeful we can do it well with our local solar installers, professional facilitators, permaculture experts, community organizations, and neighbors that care. This work includes addressing economic mobility, including racial disparities in our schools, and courageous goals that ensure resilience for all our neighbors, not just conservation of natural resources for those with means. Three, because our tourist-based economy is contributing to our outsized carbon impact, we must demand that the industry acknowledge it and that our guests are offsetting it. Most guests come by plane and car, and commute by cars when they get here. Suggestions include scheduled review and adaptive management of the 100% plan, and each of you leveraging the power of City Hall to hold the tourism industry accountable for offsetting the impact of visitors on the community at large. For our city, county, and guests, that could look like coordinating efforts with the TDA and county on Asheville regional transit, the proposed downtown shuttle, which includes benefit for workers, and a fully electric fleet with overhead chargers. Lastly, the plan for getting to 100% renewable energy needs to be woven into the Living Asheville Comprehensive plans so that every motion naming it will be accountable to leading us in the direction of a resilient community. The EITF is being given a major role in the long-term climate planning, which should be a suite of public policy initiatives around food, transit, electricity, waste, and job creation. And I share my concern with my neighbors on whose hands it is in. And I share my concern with my neighbors on whose hands it is in. I think it must be in the hands of the people and not the corporations that are huge monopolies. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Okay. We have a closed session motion.
Can I just say one thing about...
Oh, oh, sorry. Yes.
Sorry, since Joe raised it. So the draft environmental impact... Sorry, the final environmental impact statement is due out probably next month, and if you were to go to that little slice of Burton Street that they, that Joe just showed, you would see that that map looks very different now. Also, as someone who's been attending the aesthetics committee meetings now for several months, I think I've just missed one, that work is, that committee is doing amazing work, and they have put in hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours. At the last meeting, they did start to talk about what a... To go, to use the Design Center's phrase, what a signature bridge might look like across the river, and that conversation is going to be ongoing. So they are, they are close to wrapping up their recommendations. They need to get those to DOT for costing, I think by October, but then they will, they will, all of those recommendations and a full report will come to council by the end of the year.
I'm hoping that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. To prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not consider a public record within the meanings of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-31811A1. The law that makes information privileged and confidential is North Carolina Statute, Section 143-31810E. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to the administrative procedure and the potential lawsuit concerning Asheville City Council election districts, as well as potential settlements of claims, including but not limited to the following, the City of Asheville versus Charles Soderquist and Stephanie Soderquist. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Section
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.